Okay, welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Please silence all cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. If there's any private party recording this hearing, step up to the podium and request permission. And I'll introduce the board. On my far right is Mark Fineran, a voting member. To my closest right is Frank Duffy, our clerk. My name's Suzanne Murphy, Chair. To my left is James Moss, Vice Chair. To his left is Tony Bertucci, an associate, and Nick Haney, another associate. And then we have Noreen Stockman, our zoning administrator, and Ashley DiMello, the office assistant. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on every application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing process and reaching a decision. Number one, to begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Two, the applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, but the time may be extended by a vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Four, the public will be invited to comment. Comments should be limited to two minutes and be strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium. State your name and address for the record, speak into the mic, it will not amplify your voice, and record audio for FCTV viewers. And before we start, we have a time if anyone wants to come up and make a public comment with nothing that's about, nothing that's on our agenda, you're welcome to come up. Anybody?
Make what we have to do.
What?
Make what we have to do.
We're ready for the traffic to go, tell you that much. All right, I'm gonna take one out of order because it's a, I'm gonna go to, if you have an agenda, I'm taking the second one out because they're withdrawing, so I just wanna kinda get rid of it, I guess you'd say. It's 209 Courier Road. They're, they're just withdrawing. I need a motion from someone.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to allow withdrawal without prejudice of hearing 03525 Andre, trustee of 209 Courier Road, he's found without prejudice.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Everybody all set? All those in favor?
Aye.
Tony, you're at bat first. You and I?
I'm an aye, yes.
We got it. All right, next up is 9 Sycamore. This has been opened.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board, for the record, Kevin Clower. Just to point out, for a clarification, Mr. Peterson is not here tonight. Will one of the associate members be appointed as a voting member?
Yep, mix it back. We were alternating.
Okay. So, thank you for having us here tonight. As you know, I'm before you representing Mario Kula and Josephine D'Angelo, the owners of 9 Sycamore Street. They're both with us this evening. They're seeking permission to raise and rebuild the single-family dwelling on this property, which is located at the southern end of the Maravista Peninsula. It's an R.C. zoning district in a VE-15 flood zone.
You might have to speak up a bit.
Sure.
Because of that, the air conditioning thing.
At the last hearing, there was a question presented as to whether or not the board can make a finding that no special permit was required. Under 240 10.2B1D of the zoning bylaw, it states that exempted from requirements of a special permit is alteration or reconstruction of a non-conforming, single- or two-family residential structure where the alteration to the non-conforming structure will comply with the zoning bylaw and not increase the habitable space. There was some question presented by the butters and council as to the calculation of, of that habitable space. So the lot comparison worksheet, which is what we typically use, refers to gross floor area, that's what the board requires in those situations. The bylaw refers to habitable space, which are two separate things. So gross floor area is defined as the sum of the horizontal areas of all stories of a building measured from the exterior faces of exterior walls. That's the calculation that was used again in that lot comparison worksheet. And again, however, habitable space is what's referred to in that exemption. Habitable space is not defined within our bylaw. So the next provision of the bylaw, 2431A3, states that terms not defined would be interpreted by consulting a number of resources, including the state building code as amended. Per the most recent version of the building code, habitable space is space in a building for living, sleeping, eating, and cooking, but excludes bathrooms, toilet rooms, closets, halls, storage, utility spaces, and similar areas. So under gross floor area, the existing's 858 square feet and we're proposing 842 square feet, which is shown on this area plan. This is the proposed, showing the two calculations of the interior space and then the 858 square feet here. But that's under the gross floor area. Under habitable space, it's a measurement again of rooms and buildings for living, sleeping, cooking, and eating, excluding bathrooms, toilets, closets, halls, and storage. So here, what we have is a breakdown of this by room by room. And I realize this is small, so I've extrapolated it out here. Under the existing, there's a total of 720 square feet, the front sitting area, the living area, two bedrooms. That excludes the back entry, the space between the kitchen and the bathroom, which is a hall of sorts, the bathroom, and the front closet. As proposed, it's 570 square feet of habitable space. That includes the three bedrooms, the living area. What it does exclude is the ground level, which is not habitable by definition for FEMA compliance. It excludes the first floor closets, the bathrooms, and the second floor bathroom. So whether this is calculated by gross floor area or habitable space, we're still proposing less than what exists and therefore meet the requirements set forth in 240 10.2B1D. Mr. Street's position that it requires 5,000 square feet is unsupported by the bylaw or state law, that those references pertain to unconstructed lots, not lots that are already constructed and structures that are already existing protected by the non-conforming status. So as we left it last time, I think the board was considering whether or not you could find that a special permit is not needed. So I think that's the first question that needs to be addressed, and then if you find that you can make that finding and are willing to do so, great. And if not, I'm happy to proceed with the special permit application portion of our presentation.
Okay. Do we want to go to Noreen for this? No pressure.
What can I offer you?
Do you have another suggestion?
I look at the determination as to whether something's by right or not, the sole purview of the building commissioner, and if the parties agree, that's when an appeal is proper. So I think at this point, the board should be taking this as an application for a special permit.
Jim, I'm sorry, I'm just having trouble hearing.
I'm sorry. I stated I believe that the building commissioner is the one who needs to make determinations as to whether or not something is by right or not. Parties can certainly appeal if a building, if a building permit is issued. This needs to be treated, I prefer to take this as an application for a special permit.
Yeah, I don't think it was advertised any other way.
It was advertised for a special permit, but he does say in his memo of June 4 that he cites Chapter 48, Section 6, saying that you have to have 5,000 square feet, and he says, "I forward this to the zoning board of appeals for determination." I think he's asking us, is this a buildable lot?
No, it's already got a structure on it.
Yes, it does have it, yes.
So we're not looking at buildability. What we're looking, we're looking at is, is there a special permit required or is this eligible for a building permit because it meets the confines of, Mr. Clower has explained, that the habitable space is the same or less than what exists. So I think he's trying to demonstrate to the board that he feels that it should be an as-of-right building permit versus requiring a special permit.
I agree that it's a buildable lot, but I'm not sure that the building commissioner knows.
Well, so, we're not looking at buildability because there's already a house there.
Yes.
So it's clearly buildable because there's a house there.
Yes.
So now we're just talking raise and rebuild.
Clearly, in this town, there is no protection on any lot under 5,000 feet, so we need to proceed as Jim said.
Jim said.
Well, I'm not sure that that's correct either because there's already a house there. So it was built at one point, so it remains a buildable lot. But if you want to proceed with a special permit, I'm not saying I'm not.
You had to get a permit to do anything else.
Yeah, so there is a differentiation where if you have a lot that is undersized and it's not improved, so there's no house, it's looked at differently than if there's an existing house.
That's correct. That's correct. Leprous is requesting to be heard.
You want to come?
Well, I don't, if my premise was done.
Come up to the microphone so everybody can hear you.
Well, I just think, before we debate this completely, I'd like to give you the butters' side of that issue. We were here.
Even though what issue we're on, yeah.
We're still doing the special permit.
There really isn't, there isn't a time for this, I don't believe.
No, he's doing the special permit. I'd only like to address the exemption part of this, and then we can go forth. Christopher Lebert, I'm representing William and Judy Flanney, a butter at 407 Maravista. I'm sure the board recalls that we were here in May, and there was some discussion about Mr. Street and his position. What was not made known at that meeting was that this project was reviewed by Mr. Street back in October of 2024, and he wrote a letter to Mr. Kula, the owner of the property, and he said, "Thank you for contacting our department the other day for clarification on the action you should take moving forward. We have reviewed your project, and due to the area of your lot being smaller than the protected size per Master General laws 48, Section 6, 5,000 square feet, your project will require ZBA approval." He clearly said this project needs approvals from this board. That letter was not brought to the board's attention when we were here in May. The memorandum that Mr. Duffy is referring to tonight is sort of a follow-up to that, where again, he, he doesn't say approval in this particular memo, but he says again, "Back to the board of appeals for determination." The presentation that Mr. Clower just made to you was wonderful, but he's making it to the wrong audience. He should have been making that pitch to Mr. Street, because it was Mr. Street's call as to whether or not this project needed ZBA approval. And he clearly said it needs ZBA approval. He apparently is basing it on the fact that the lot is smaller than 5,000 square feet. And he's more or less indicating in his memorandums and his letters, that's a lot, as Mr. Fineran has just pointed out, gets no protection under the law. I appreciate if there's a house on it, and you know, what happened back in 1940 or 1930 or whatever, God love you. But a 2,900 square foot lot doesn't get protection under the state law or under our zoning bylaw. But a whole argument relative to the pros and cons of the exemption really is moot, because this is not an advisory board. This is not an advisory, and we shouldn't really be guessing here tonight that maybe Mr. Street wants us to determine whether this is a buildable lot or a non-buildable lot. That's, that's not the function of this board. This board, under Chapter 48, Section 14, has very clear authority. Special permits, variances, 40Bs, and appeals, the very same language, more or less, in our zoning bylaw. It is not properly before this board to come in and say, "We're applying to you as a board, but we don't think we need to be here before the board. I'll, I'll point this board to the publication and why all of the public is here tonight. We were notified to come in and hear a special permit application." That's what was published. This is not correct to be making a determination of any nature whatsoever that you disagree with Mr. Street referring it to this board for approval. There is a process for that. You appeal his determination. We all understand that because you've all sat on those types of hearings before, and Mr. Clower is aware of it. They knew back in October, they were being referred to this board to seek approvals. They didn't appeal that determination. They more or less come before you, appealing for the very relief that they felt was appropriate, the special permit, but by the way, they're coming in and saying, "But you know what? We disagree with Mr. Street, so can you just maybe tell, maybe just not require us to even be here?" That's not properly before the board. It just isn't. So I, I think this hearing needs to go forward. I, I think.
Just to be clear, that's, I thought if I was clear, the direction, I think we're going.
I think. Okay. But. I hope you can appreciate, while you're debating the topic and the presentation is rather one-sided, I, I wanted to at least be able to chirp in just a bit.
May I just ask a question?
Go ahead.
Who has the authority to determine whether this has to have a special permit? Who has that authority?
It's very clear, it's the building department.
That's right.
It's Mr. Street. It's not up to this board to make that decision unless Mr. Street's decision is being appealed, and it's not being appealed. He made the decision, and there's nobody here tonight appealing his decision.
Thank you.
Town council, would you like to weigh in?
Thank you. Attorney Lebert.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mauro Keith, Town Council. I appreciate the question about whose responsibility that is. That is a question for me to answer and not for an attorney for the applicant or an attorney for the butter. That question really should come to me, and I'm happy to answer it. The building commissioner's responsibility is to evaluate the zoning code when an application comes in and either determine that a building permit is required or deny the building permit. Here, what happened, and the zoning board's responsibility is to, as Attorney Lebert said, is to consider requests for variance, requests for special permits, and to hear appeals from the determination of the building commissioner. This board has no authority and no responsibility to, in the first place, make a determination that no special permit is required. For a special permit application, there are two choices for the board. Either approve the special permit or deny it. So here before you, you have an application for a special permit, and you evaluate it on its merits based on the facts and based on the law, and either issue the special permit or deny that. I'm happy to provide you with more guidance on that, on the next part of it, or I see we're doing this sort of piece by piece, I'm happy to circle back with you when you start addressing whether these exemptions apply or not, whether a Section 6 finding is required, or I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So we're just gonna proceed with the hearing?
Proceed on a special permit.
Yeah, that was pretty conclusive.
Do we need to vote on it?
No.
No. I would suggest taking no action. So, as I mentioned, we'd be happy to move forward with the special permit application. So we appreciate the board's consideration of that question. I think it's an interesting question, and, but I certainly respect the opinion of Town Council, as well as Mr. Street here. So we are requesting a special.
Kevin, you're gonna have to speak up, Kevin.
Yep. So we are requesting a special permit pursuant to Section 240 10.2A of the zoning bylaw. The board has previously reviewed an application for this project originally in 2022. Revised plans were submitted but withdrawn in 2023, and since then, significant changes have been made to the application in an effort to address concerns of neighbors and comments of the board. Some of these changes have been more successful than others. Joe and Mario purchased this property in 2022, seeking to make improvements, and it has been used by the applicants and also as a rental. Dwelling was built in 1940, and as with any structure of that age, it needs upgrades. This is in a VE-15 velocity zone, so the improvements should comply with FEMA and the building code regulations relative to substantial improvements. Compliance with the flood zone standards requires the bottom of the joist supporting the first floor of habitable space be at least two feet above the flood zone, which in this case is elevation 17, approximately 11.6 feet above grade. Currently, there's a one-story dwelling and shed, footprint is 1,025 square feet, and the lot is 2,932 square feet. It's presently non-conforming. Front yard setback, 1.1 where 25 is required, side yard setback to the west, 0.6 feet where 10 is required, lot coverage by structure being 35% where 20 is required, 20 is allowed by right and up to 25 by special permit. And lot coverage by structures paving and parking is presently 46% where 40% is allowed by right. There's also no parking that's not within the street layout. What's proposed is a dwelling that reduces the clutter on the lot, eliminates the existing shed, provides sufficient parking on site. There'll be three proposed bedrooms, which is an increase of one over the existing, but this is on the Little Pond Sewer District, which allows a four bedrooms by right. And the proposed structure is significantly smaller than what exists, the footprint is 586 square feet. It eliminates all existing non-conforming dimensional, all existing dimensional nonconformities. The front yard setback is improved from 1.1 feet to 25.6. The side yard setback to the west is improved from 0.6 feet to 11 feet. The rear yard setback remains conforming at 10.2 feet. The side yard setback to the east remains conforming at 11.4 feet. The lot coverage by structure is eliminated as a nonconformity, decreasing from 35% down to 20%. And the lot coverage by structures paving and parking is eliminated as a nonconformity as well, decreasing from 46% down to 40%, not 38.9%. So this would require a special permit pursuant to 240 10.2A for pre-existing non-conforming structures changed by special permit, which can be done provided the board finds they're not substantially more detrimental than what exists. You're asked to consider the standards of 240 12.18 and whether or not the new alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs the views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the average dimensions in the neighborhood. Here, there's no new nonconformity created. All existing dimensional nonconformities are eliminated. The only nonconforming aspect of this is the lot size. We did prepare a lot comparison worksheet looking at 37 properties within a 300-foot radius. This is a very dense clustered neighborhood, and the proposed dwelling is below the average footprint and gross floor area in the neighborhood. The home was designed to try to observe the privacy of the neighbors with appropriate setbacks while complying with FEMA regulations. In terms of average dimensions, it is very much a character of the neighborhood. The only difference being this would be in flood zone compliance. There are many similarly sized and larger homes, many of which have built today but face similar requirements. I'd like to address some of the correspondence that's been received by the board and directed at the applicants. Two letters refer to the 1986 denial of a special permit, stating that a second floor was inappropriate for this lot. A few things to consider there. That proposal was for a second floor that was less than one foot from the property boundary to the west within the existing footprint, and the property was not then located in a velocity zone. One letter said that we were directed by the town to phase construction, which is simply not the case. Compliance with the flood zone requirement should be encouraged and incentivized, it should not be punished. The position of town is not and should not be to force phasing within a velocity zone. There's a recurring idea in some of the correspondence that these aren't homeowners, that they're commercial investors, which is, again, simply not accurate. It was purchased with an investment mortgage because that's the business that the applicant is in, however, it was intended as a rental until they could undertake the renovations, at which point there will be a refinance and a construction loan. The refinance has already taken place. It's refinanced as a second home. This is intended for the use of Josephine D'Angelo, and will be her retirement home. Since it is, has been refinanced, there's no prohibition on use. Neither way, it should have no bearing in the merits of the application. One letter said that this would be the tallest building for miles, which is so wrong as to be laughable. Just within sight of this property, 76 manats at 32 feet, 32 sycamores at 32 feet, four Maravistas at 33 feet, five armoires at 34 and a half feet. And that's to say nothing of the homes along Manot. Posited that the increased hard, that we would increase the hardscape, which would have negative effects, but we're decreasing lot coverage by structures paving and parking, which is going from 46% to 46% down to 38.9%. There was also a joint letter that was submitted earlier this week, which while well-written and persuasive, is incorrect on a number of fronts. I've addressed the calculation of habitable space already, I won't reiterate that. It states that the size of this lot is not adequate for the use. As it exists today, this is a single-family home. It's proposed as a single-family home, but with a smaller footprint and less gross floor area. It suggested that any alteration to a non-conforming structure would comply or require, would require compliance with lot size. I'll admit that our bylaw could use some improvement, but it's clear that a reading of the bylaw that suggests that any change to a non-conforming structure would require that the lot size come into compliance with a 40,000-square-foot minimum is as wrong as wrong can be. It would render most of this town no longer buildable, if that was the correct interpretation. What was correct in that letter is that we met with the neighbors in July. We had a discussion about the plans, where they were, where they have been, and we were presented with a sketch plan by the neighbors of what they'd be willing to support. They weren't open to any divergence from that sketch. We did consider it. We met with architects to discuss that sketch. The proposed design wasn't workable from an architectural or structural standpoint. Those meetings continued up until late last week. However, we communicated this to the neighbors through their council. And while I do greatly appreciate the willingness of the neighbors to meet, which I expressed to them a number of times throughout that process, I do balk a bit at design being dictated by, by butters to a project. The board has recently approved other projects, very similar to this. 72 Manot was just before this board in January. It was allowed to be raised and rebuilt with a ridge height of 34 feet 10 inches. But it's not in a velocity zone, so it wasn't elevated on pilings. Last fall, 26 Deacons was a raise and rebuild on a 3,000-square-foot lot, maintaining non-conforming front yard and side yard setbacks, as well as non-conforming lot coverage by structures and by structure and by structures paving and parking. That was approved by this board. Most recently, on Melrose Avenue, a 3,000-square-foot lot was, with a garage, was allowed to be raised and rebuilt as a, as a conforming home, much as this would be. As discussed, this application does not create any new dimensional nonconformities, and eliminates all of the existing nonconformities. Based on that, the proposed structure is not substantially more detrimental, and with flood zone compliance and the elimination of the nonconformities is a significant improvement. The board's asked to consider those factors, and also whether the proposal has adverse effects that outweigh the benefits. As consideration, you're asked to look at the site, size of the site, which while undersized by today's standards, is adequate for the proposed use. There's no change from the current use as a single-family home. Site is suitable and well situated for the proposed use. Again, there's no change from current use as a single-family home, and the proposed structure will eliminate all setback and lot coverage issues. There's an improvement here to traffic flow and safety, we're providing onsite parking where none exists. You're asked to consider the impact on neighborhood visual character. While this structure is elevated, it is compliant with flood zone requirements, and that should not be viewed as a detriment, as it runs contrary to public policy. There's more than adequate methods for sewage disposal and drainage. It's connected to the town sewer, providing drip strips and onsite drainage where none currently exists. Utilities and public services are present and more than adequate, and there's no impact on the supply of portable housing. It was suggested in one of the letters that this would have an impact on starter homes, but this is a home that's three blocks from the beach. This is not, was not, and has not ever been a starter home. In a recent application, we discussed how a proposed structure meeting all setback and lot coverage requirements was an incredibly rare thing. And board members discussed how they didn't feel they could vote against it when it met all of those dimensional requirements. This is no different. Here we have a proposal that's not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure, provide benefit in eliminating all of the existing dimensional nonconformities and complies with flood zone requirements. The applicants and their team have worked hard to find ways to reduce the scope and the impact of this project, to reduce the potential effects to the butters and to respond to comments in the town. I believe that this board can and should grant the special permit, and I'd be glad to address any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you. Is it okay with the board if Attorney Leberts comes up and then we'll ask our questions? Is it okay with the board if Attorney Leiberts comes up and then will ask our questions? Is that okay with everybody?
Okay.
That way we can hear both, if that's okay.
Thank you. I listened to Mr. Clower's presentation, but the one thing that he left out is this is a much larger structure than what's existing. The presentation seems to be going in the direction of habitable space, and we just went through that whole discussion. But the cases, the bylaws, don't talk in terms of habitable space to determine if something is more nonconforming or an intensification. The case of Bjorkland versus the town of Norwell dispels anything along those lines. Bjorkland was a case where you had a house on a 34,000-square-foot lot, but it had a front yard encroachment, was too close to the road. There was a nonconformity. And the application in that particular matter was to tear down the house and rebuild and meet all of the setbacks and lot coverage and whatnot. But the house was going to be bigger. And both the zoning board and the Massachusetts Supreme Court said, because it's a larger structure, it is a greater intensification. It is a more nonconforming use than the prior use. So when you have a small lot and you make a bigger structure, the law says it's more nonconforming. It's crystal clear. That's what the case says. Bjorkland versus the town of Norwell. But this particular site has history also before the board. And it wasn't your current owner, but in 1986, there was a decision. There was a filing where the applicant sought to put a second floor on. Tonight, the applicant is seeking a second floor and then a third floor and a flat roof because you really can't go any higher than they're asking to go. But in 1986, the application was only for a second floor, and the zoning board said no. And it said, "The existing nonconforming structure is located on a lot that only contains 2,876 square feet. The addition of a second floor onto this structure, which is too close to its lot line, would have a negative visual effect on the neighborhood. The lot already has the appearance of being overcrowded, and the board finds that adding on to the structure would be substantially more detrimental." I don't think anybody can seriously dispute that although this building apparently meets setbacks and apparently there's a habitable space argument here to be made, I don't think anybody could seriously dispute this is a much larger structure. This is one level to three. We had a problem with two levels back in 1986, and that was determined, again, to have a negative visual effect on the neighborhood. Now we're talking about three levels, and the neighborhood hasn't changed that much since 1986. We were before you just a couple of years ago in, bear with me here, in 2022, and we had an application not unlike you have before you tonight. Some slight differences, but it was, again, a three-level structure. It was not received warmly, not at all. And the board was in the process of voting to deny it when Mr. Clower asked for permission to withdraw the application. And by a four-to-one vote, that was granted. But that ship was sinking that night, and it was sinking for the very same reasons that I'm espousing here tonight. It's just too large, period. There's just no other way to say it. The applicant is seeking a special permit, and it's claiming to be pre-existing nonconforming and seeking to extend, alter, or change pursuant to 240-10.2A. And I hesitate, I almost don't want to throw the board a curveball, but if you actually read Mr. Street's memo and understand his logic, he seems to be saying the lot's not even protected as a pre-existing nonconforming lot, at least pursuant to 486. I guess his letter speaks to it being pre-existing nonconforming, but it also speaks to it being not protected. I'm not going to make this argument tonight, but I'm going to shoot a shot across the bow. I'm not even sure this qualifies for a special permit. This may require a variance because if you follow the building commissioner's logic, this lot is simply too small to be afforded the protections of a pre-existing nonconforming lot. But if you want to shelve that argument, I'm happy to do so, and I'm happy to proceed to 240-12.1E, some of the criteria that the board needs to address. Adequacy of the site, suitability of the site, but most importantly, impact on neighborhood I just have a few pictures I want to show the board. Here's existing. Excuse me. I apologize. Here's your structure. Here's the client's plans for the structure. Maravista. That's your structure. It's a little, really little place on an extremely little lot. This is what it looks like if you approve the application. That's what's being designed.
I'll go right up by the microphone so the audience can see it on TV. Perhaps you could come closer. I hate to see it.
I tell you what. In just one moment, I'll submit them to the board. And we went even one step further. I suggest to you that this is going to be this area of town in 20 years with these Any questions? Submit these? Bjorkland is the case that really applies to this application, and it speaks to municipalities struggling with these issues where you have the small lots, and then I think they use the term in that case, the McMansionization, this type of thing. I'm certainly not suggesting that this is some grand majestic structure that's being proposed, but it's the same logic. How does the board protect these smaller homes, small lot communities? Because this structure, if you use what I would suggest is common sense, is about as not in keeping with the neighborhood as you could possibly propose. I know there are a lot of other people that want to be here tonight and be heard. I'm going to urge the board to deny the application, basically for the same reasons that it was going to shoot it down in 2022, because really, it's not much different, and for the same reasons that a two-floor, a two-story structure was the 1986. This is not one of those situations where we just look at this lot and say it conforms because of setbacks and lot coverage. You have to focus on, and Bjorkland tells you this, you have to focus on the fact that this is an undersized lot. And in Bjorkland, they struggled with it, and that lot was 34,000 square feet. This is 2,900. Bjorkland versus the Zoning Board of Appeals of Norwell, 450, Mass., 357. It's a case from 2008. I'd urge the board to deny the application. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the board will start to ask attorney Clower questions?
I could make a few quick points.
Okay, go ahead.
Madam Chair, Bjorkland's an interesting case, but the finding of Bjorkland was that a special permit was needed because they didn't have an exemption in their bylaw. And in that case, the house being proposed was six times larger than the existing house. Not, you know, this is gross floor area, this is the size of the house. That was the issue at play there. But the board found, the court found that a special permit was needed, not that one couldn't be granted. Attorney Leiberts referred to the '86 special permit decision, and he even said it was, in that case, it was too close to the lot line because they were proposing a second floor that was one foot from the property line to the west, which I had mentioned. That is, in this case, we're coming into compliance. And I don't think it's safe to, fair to say that the 2022 application was the same because it was wildly different, in fact. The 2022 application shown here didn't eliminate the nonconformities. The front yard setback was only going to be seven feet. Side yard was going to be five. Lot coverage was going to be 34.4. Footprint was going to be 1,008. Gross floor is going to be 1,827 square feet. This is significantly bigger than what we're actually proposing today. We have shrunk, minimized, and done everything we can to bring this into compliance here, providing parking on site, providing appropriate setbacks, providing appropriate lot coverage to address the shot across the bow, so to speak, to Chapter 48, Section 7, which was modified in 2017, states that a structure is protected after 10 years. This was built in 1940, six years after a building permit was issued. And it's able to seek relief under Master of the Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6, referring to nonconforming structures, and any applicable sections of the zoning bylaw relative to nonconforming structures. Our bylaw says the same thing. Just with the renderings, I would posit that those renderings are not exactly to scale. That said, I would now be happy to address any questions that the board may have.
Mark, you want to start off?
I've heard plenty. I don't really have anything at the moment.
It is kind of hard to ask questions here because there's so many facts. Mr. Clower, let's take a minute to think about that 1986 decision of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I think you said in your initial presentation that in 1986, the FEMA regulations did not apply?
If this was in a flood zone, it would have been an A flood zone. It wasn't changed to a V flood zone until 2014.
Okay, so there was no requirement in 1986 to elevate the structure?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. But there is now.
There is now. There very much is now.
Okay. The other point I'd like to ask you to perhaps amplify for us. On the Bjorkland case from the town of Norwell, which Mr. Leiberts has quoted, there was a finding made that the increased size of the structure could result in a finding that the structure was more nonconforming or perhaps substantially more detrimental. Was it the finding that it was or that the Board of Appeals had the authority to make that decision?
So that, if I can actually cede this question to someone else who can probably address this much better than I, I'd like to do so.
For the record, I'm Steve Bjorkland. So I know a little bit about the case, probably more than anybody here would understand because I spent about 10 years trying to get the house approved up in Norwell. And I don't want to go into the whole history of what happened with the case. I actually won the first portion of the law case, lost the second portion of the law case. And it's my understanding from hiring the guy that wrote the zoning act, which is why I went this far, Peter Harrington, who wrote it for Barbara Gray. I went based on what he was telling me to do in order to get the approval for that. But the attorney was correct. The lot's about 34,000 square feet. It was one of the smaller lots in that particular neighborhood. I tried to take a 600-square-foot house, take it down, meet all the setback requirements, all the height requirements, all the lot coverage requirements. I met everything. The only nonconformity I had was the size of the lot. Before I did anything, the lot was 34,000 square feet. Once this house got built, which the house did get built, okay? It's not six times larger. It's a little bit smaller. We took the family room off. But we went back to the Zoning Board of Appeals and got the approval for a structure that is way bigger than 600 square feet on this particular lot. But the lot's still 34,000 square feet. So the nonconformity hadn't changed in that at all. So as far as my case is concerned up there, you can make a determination whether they have or have not increased the nonconforming nature. And with this one, I looked at this, I spent a little bit of time on this because I know this is a really strange situation. You have made determinations in the past when I went through some of your older decisions where you've allowed people on undersized lots. And I will tell everybody in the audience, if you're on an undersized lot, you don't have to get variances, okay? You're going to be able to get special permits. So if a storm comes in and wipes everybody out, don't worry about getting variances. It's a special permit, okay? And as far as special permits and findings are concerned, this board needs to make a finding whether they have increased the nonconforming nature or not. And in this particular case, they have reduced three of the side setbacks to the point where they now meet all four setbacks. So that's three nonconformities that are gone with this application, and they now are going to meet the lot coverage, which didn't meet it before, now it does. So there's four nonconformities that you're going to get rid of with this application. And Frank, you're correct. They now have to elevate the structure, and if that storm comes in, everybody that's here, if they're in the neighborhood, are going to have to do the same thing because 50% of the value of their house, if they get wiped out in a storm, if they go over that 50%, they have to elevate. And I would think that this town would want people to elevate in Falmouth on Cape Cod if they're in a flood zone. I'm sure that the applicant doesn't want to have to elevate for the floodplain issue, but he does want two floors on the house. So, I mean, I would urge you to vote in favor of this, and I know it's tough for the neighborhood because they're the first ones in this situation, but if they get to the point where we have a major storm, I don't understand how their attorney could come back and argue that we need to elevate all these houses now, because that's what's going to happen. I mean, it's happening in every other town around. It's going to happen here. The Coonans just happen to be the first ones in this situation. And I'll answer some questions if they come back up again.
Let me ask Mr. Clower, though, another question.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Just for argument's sake, this board finds that the proposed structure is substantially, is more nonconforming than the existing structure. I get the impression from Mr. Leiberts that that is conclusive. We have to then determine that it is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think we still have discretion.
I think you have--
We have discretion.
I think you have quite a bit of discretion because what the Bjorkland case that cited says is that it needs a special permit.
And it doesn't foreclose us from making--
It does not say that you can't issue a special permit. It just says you need a special permit. So that still gives the board the ability to make that decision, is it substantially more detrimental than what currently exists.
Thank you. You all set?
Jim?
Attorney Clower, just a couple of questions. Let's make sure my notes are up to date. What is the actual lot size? We've got, I've got a couple of different figures in my notes. I've got 2,932, I've got 2,876, and 2,896 on a different paper. What is the actual lot size?
2,932 is the only figure I've ever given this board.
Okay. Thank you.
Based on our civil engineering plans.
You're reducing down to a proposed footprint of 586 square feet?
Yes.
And what is the actual ridge height going to be?
34.
34 even?
Just going to pull it up so I can. 34 feet even.
What's the height of the-- What's the height of the railing?
That's 34 feet.
Top of the railing?
34 feet.
Through you, Madam Chairman, I have a question for Town Council.
Yes, Mr.?
Yes, I would ask you to weigh in on the issue of Borkland, if whether or not we have the discretion to issue a special permit or not, or we're required to make a finding. I mean, I've read, I reviewed the Borkland case, and they're concerned at the end about, you know, mansionization, and I think that, that is something the board has struggled with for some time. At the same time, I would look, this might be somewhat distinguishable because what was proposed in Borkland and what the court stated was that it was, was proposed was a larger footprint, whereas here, there's actually a smaller footprint, but we are going up. At the same time, I, the other, I'd ask just to kind of weigh in is that the board has always struggled, we've had many applications where FEMA flood compliance has caused what were very modest one-story homes to go up, and if you look down all of Surf Drive, you can see buildings that have gone up, that we've never punished anyone for FEMA flood compliance, and that these neighborhoods are in transition. So I guess I would like a little guidance from you as Town Council as to whether or not we have the authority, or if this is something it doesn't even, do we, do we have the authority to make a finding that it is in fact less detrimental, or is Borkland conclusive or very persuasive that a denial is appropriate?
So Borkland, I'll try to sift through all of those questions.
A lot of things.
As best I can, and I'm going to miss something, so just remind me and I'll try to come back to it. The Borkland case is very helpful, but there, it's distinguishable. What the court said, determined in Borkland, and I have it here, is that the, the sole issue before the court in Borkland was whether the proposed reconstruction increases the nonconforming nature of the structure of the house. Here, there's been an assertion that all of the nonconformities that exist right now are being eliminated. And this proposed structure, this proposed project, will conform with all zoning. And you just started to touch on that by asking about the ridge height, et cetera. My understanding right now is that the nonconformities of the existing structure is that the setbacks on the side and on the front are encroaching, it's a lot coverage issue, and an overall lot coverage issue as to paving, parking, and the structure itself. As proposed, all of those have been eliminated. So that part is conforming. What you're left with, however, is the undersized, nonconforming lot. And it's because of this, because the noncon, because the conformities, the nonconformities, I'm sorry, have been eliminated, except for the lot structure. If you go through all of the exemptions in 10.2B, none of them apply. So that puts us back into the category of 10.2A1, where not only is a special permit required for this project, but also a finding about whether it's substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. So that's the section six, that's what's echoed in Chapter 48, Section 6. I will just also make a note that when this, if this board gets to that point and agrees that not only is a special permit required because none of the exemptions apply, but that the substantially more detrimental finding under 10.2A1 needs to be made. The substantially more detrimental finding is only as to the lot coverage. It doesn't apply to any of the conformities that are, would, that exist in the proposed project. You can't make a substantially more detrimental finding about an aspect of the project that now conforms. It can only be about the nonconformity lot coverage.
Lot size.
Lot size. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Council.
That's an excellent point. No, that's, no, that's, I'm glad you corrected me on that. So did I miss any, did I miss something, or?
No.
No, okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Attorney.
There is a distinction between the case before you tonight and Borkland, and I, and I want to clarify a point with Attorney Duffy. Borkland was a 34,000-square-foot lot, okay? If you read Mr. Street's letter, what's he concerned about? He's concerned about the fact that this lot is smaller than 5,000 square feet. He's putting this property in a different category than Borkland. Now, I threw a shot across the bow and I said maybe it needs a variance, but assuming the board disagrees with me on that, we do go back to the special permit criteria, and I'm, Mr. Duffy, I'm not arguing that an intensification of a nonconformity means you can't grant a permit. I'm arguing that building a larger structure on a very small lot is an increase in the nonconforming nature, and that's exactly what Borkland says. However, however, from there, you then ask yourselves, okay, we're increasing a nonconformity, we're getting rid of some nonconformities, too. But at the end of the day, is this proposal substantially more detrimental than the existing? And that goes back to the criteria that we always, that we always have to talk about, the criteria found in 240, 12.1E. It's the size of the structure. We're going from one level not to two. This applicant can live with two levels. This applicant is choosing not to. This applicant is saying, I don't want two, I want three. I want two floors of living space, not one. What's existing, and what's existed apparently since, I think, Mr. Clower said, 1940 or something, has been one simple level. This applicant wants to increase the size and have two floors of living space on top of the stilts, or on top of, of the, of the first level base. This is a want. This is not a need. It's a want, it's not a need. And it's a want on a 2,900-square-foot lot. So yes, I do hearken back to 1986, when the, when the applicant was seeking to go to two levels, and the board said, uh-uh, not in keeping with the neighborhood. And it was about the scope, the size, the height. Clearly it was. And I'm also harkening back to where we were a couple of years ago here, same thing. Nothing has really changed. This applicant doesn't want to continue to have a reasonably small, modest dwelling on a 2,900-square-foot lot. They're going to tell you, we need setbacks in lot coverage, so we can go right up to the max. And I'm suggesting that this board could say no to that, and I'm suggesting this board should say no to that.
So the only issue we're really talking about here is height then?
Of the lot and the lot size.
Well, the lot size, but also height.
Just overall mass, overall size of the structure. Let's talk about height. Let's talk about the fact that it is way taller than every building, every structure in that neighborhood. Let's talk about the shadowing that's going to end up, you know, at sunset time on Mr. Flynn's property, and let's talk about the shadows that are going to be, that are going to be cast upon the abutter to the west on the other side of the structure. Let's talk about neighborhood views and vistas. This is exactly what the 1986 permit was talking about. This is not a building that belongs there. That's what, that's essentially what this board decided in '86, and we clearly, it was clearly turned down a couple of years ago because of size. Again, my, the arguments being made, well, we make setbacks and so on and so forth, as if this isn't a larger structure. It's a much larger structure. It's a three-level structure from a one-level structure. And it needs a special permit, and because they're, they're, they, they won't stop at two levels and they insist on three, this board has the right to say no.
You gave us a, exhibit a few minutes ago here, showing what this neighborhood might look, look like if everybody went up.
Right.
What happens if a hurricane blows through here next week, in May?
Different situation.
And, and we, we get inundated with applications by everybody in the neighborhood that wants to go up to 35 feet because they have to comply with this DA 15 zone. I mean, this neighborhood's in transition. What's it?
This neighborhood is not in transition. I suppose, if, if, I suppose if that would have happened, we'd have a bit of a dilemma. How's it happen in my lifetime, and I don't think it's happened in anybody else's lifetime here, but I, I suppose it's possible.
Been here for hundreds of years, finally.
And I'm not quite sure-
You're the second person tonight that is-
I'm not quite sure-
-that's for sure a hurricane's going to come and ruin this neighborhood.
I just didn't say it was coming through.
Mr. Duffy, I can't speak to what's, I can't speak to future days of future applications. I mean, I don't know what we do for meteorite strikes either. You know, I, I know what's there now, and I know that there's a neighborhood there right now, and I know that there are people from that neighborhood here right now. And I know that they're upset about this and they don't want it. So I think they're going to send other people here tonight that the board's going to have to, or the board might want to hear from.
Kevin, before Tony starts asking, are you all set, or do you want to?
No, I just, I wanted to make sure we got back to the board questions. If I can, just address a few quick things. I, I think as Attorney O'Keefe pointed out, the question before you was, is the same exact lot size as presently exists going to be substantially more detrimental is really the threshold question here. Attorney Lepper said a number of times that we could add a second floor, but we can't actually add a second floor, not because of the 1986 decision, but because under our zoning bylaw, the addition of more than 200 square feet of habitable space in a velocity zone is considered a substantial improvement and would trigger the same exact requirement for elevation. We, that's, so it's simply not the case. And I don't think the question is mass or shadowing, because that's what's provided under 240, 113A4 for lot coverage in excess of 20%, or not in excess of 20%. So the question is, is what's proposed substantially more detrimental? And when we have an existing structure with a number of nonconformities that are coming into conformity, the only remaining nonconformity is lot size. So that, that would be my, my, my quick response to those points, but I'd love to hear if the board has any additional questions.
Tony, you're up there.
No, I've been on the board for over two years, and I generally ask a lot of questions on every application. This one is truly setting me back in my seat, however. It's not going to stop me tonight. Madam Chair, through you, may I ask a question of Town Council? In the two-plus years I've been on this board, I have relied on 240, 10.2 review standards, and included in that 12.1E, because that's part of 10.2. And I've always believed that that gives this board a tremendous amount of latitude and capacity to make some decisions because there's a lack of clarity in our bylaws. I just heard Town Council tell us that we really can't look at or consider those things about this proposed project that had been brought into conformity, including the height, which is, which conforms now to our bylaws, the setbacks conform to our bylaws. But what I want to know, and I want to understand, is, does 10.2 and 12.1E, this is my first question, provide us with a lot of latitude to make choices about adequacy? Are we limited? What, how does, are we limited?
That's a loaded question.
I know.
I, I am having a hard time answering it because it's so broad, and my answer has to be as broad as your question. You're limited, but only to what's in your jurisdiction and what's in the bylaws. So for example, if the board tries to make requirements or findings that are within the jurisdiction of another board, that is beyond the scope of 12.1E. But you have factors here that are clearly laid out. I do caution, however, that, that 3B seems to apply to the structure versus the lot itself. But you have room here within the language of your bylaw. Just stick to zoning.
I wouldn't dare go anyplace else.
I know you wouldn't, I know you wouldn't.
Not here, anyway. So, under 12.1E, Subparagraph D, we have to consider as part of our review criteria in 12.1, impact on the neighborhood visual character. And you know the rest of it from what I've applied. Impact on the neighborhood visual character. That gives us a lot of latitude to decide, do we think this struck, proposed structure is going to adversely affect, even when it's in compliance, on many areas now, height, setback, even when it's in compliance of those things, we still have the latitude to consider the neighborhood visual character and its impact, this house's impact. If I'm incorrect in thinking that way, then I need to know that now because I've been doing that for two, almost two-plus years.
So you're not incorrect, or you are correct, however you want to look at it. But for here, I just want, I just want to reiterate that when you're making this finding of substantially more detrimental, and using these guidelines that you're pointing out, it all has to be tied to the lot size. So when you're, so, and not any of the structural or dimensional aspects of the, of the project, because those are all conforming. What you're talking about are the nonconforming aspects, and it's just the lot coverage. So you can do the analysis that you've just proposed, but it, just tie it to the size of the lot.
But I-
So we're tying up-
May I just, may I just please disagree for a minute?
Yeah.
It simply says, under 12.1E, Subparagraph D, "Impact on the neighborhood visual character." It doesn't tell me anything else, doesn't tell me I have to consider anything you just told me about lot size. It just says, "Impact on the neighborhood visual character." Doesn't further define that. Now I'm hearing that there's some kind of invisible definition that now guides my thinking as one board member about this, in this case, this particular project's neighborhood visual, how would impacts the neighborhood as far as the visual character?
Fair, that's a fair point, and my response to that is, what I'm telling you is derived from case law. It's case law that has, has, has interpreted Chapter 40, 40A, Section 6, which is the analog to 12.2A, Section 1. So what, the reason why I'm telling you that anything that you, any findings that you make about how it's substantially detrimental to the neighborhood, why that has to be tied to the lot size nonconformity, it's because of all the cases that talk about that interpreting a similar section of the statute.
So, on that point about case law, this board has now been made aware of a particular case law. But on a regular basis, we don't have case law unless an attorney presents that. So we can only go by the bylaw unless somebody stands before us and says, oh, you have to consider this. And when they do that, we haven't had a chance to read that case law, we can't evaluate that case law. We have nothing more than we can do than to interpret, in this case, by the way, I see it in 12.1E and 10.2. So I don't know how to take that argument that we have to look at case law if we can't analyze it ourselves.
I'm not saying you have to take a look at case law, I'm just saying, I'm, you know, I've been asked to come here to help you go through this.
Believe me, I thank you for doing that.
And I'm telling you what the case law says, you know, I'm always here to, to provide guidance and assistance, and if there's cases that you want me to analyze, I'm happy to do that. None of you are expected to have independent knowledge of, of that. And what you are expected to do is take your experience, all of the years of experience that you have that are relevant to here, and apply it in the best way you can. That's all you're expected to do.
So I want to just touch, I appreciate, thank you, thank you for being here tonight.
You're welcome. I'm happy to be here.
Under 10.2, it, and I know you know this, but let me just say it aloud, all right? Part of it, it says, "Does it reasonably conform to the average dimensions found in the neighborhood?" Well, I have to make an evaluation of that.
Right.
All right? Because now I have to go back to the small lot, a height that's now conforming, it's actually shorter than the, the maximum height it can be, and I have to think as one board member that, does it conform to the average dimensions? I've got this really tall house now, with a roof deck, by the way, two of them, that are well above every- are well above everybody else. And so the dimensions of this house, I might say, I might, I don't know, I might say that this house does not conform to the average dimensions of the house when I drove up and down the streets of all of them. So, I just want to make sure that there aren't some things in our bylaw, which is the only thing I can depend on, and of course, will you tell us to as well? Because it's, it's the only rules I can go by here. And now I'm using, as you mentioned, I have to use my experience, in this case, as someone who's developed a lot of property, knows how these things come together. And I just want to make sure that we can do that, that we have the freedom to do that, even if it's just limited to now the non-conforming lot size. That's all. I did, I just want to make sure I understood that carefully enough.
I think you're headed in the right path. And I, I can't tell you how to conclude or what, what to put in your decision, but just do exactly what you're doing and make the analysis and make the argument, support whatever conclusions you make with findings, and that's the best I can offer you.
Town council, seeing I have to really be on my tippy toes to be careful.
That's, that's right. And that, that was it? No more questions from you?
Of course, thank you very much.
Oh, okay.
Nick?
I, I feel comfortable, I, with town councils, I mean, what she, I'm fine. Yeah.
Could I address what town council is saying?
Sure. Do you want to address it first while you're, okay, go ahead.
If I understand what she's saying, she seems to be saying that if the structure conforms, that somehow we only look at the lot and we're no longer looking at the structure. That clearly isn't the law. And she talks about case law, but show me that case and I'll be very surprised. This is an application for a special permit. Every special permit requires this board to address 240 12.1E. And to your point, sir, adequacy of the site, suitability of the site, impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas. What town council seems to be saying is directly opposite to what Bjorkland says. Here's Mr. Bjorkland here tonight. I kind of feel thrilled to be in his company because I've been reading this case over and over and over and over and over and over again, and I finally get to, get to see the man. But bear in mind, this is Bjorkland exactly, but on a smaller scale. The Bjorkland house conformed, or the, the proposed house conformed to all of the dimensional regulations, including height. But because it was proposed to be larger, just like we have here, there was a requirement, or there was a finding that it was substantially more detrimental. And there was dicta in the case clearly saying enlarging a structure on a, on a small lot, an undersized lot, is an intensification of the non-conformity. Now, I fully appreciate we're losing a whole bunch of non-conformities here, but we're, we're gaining one. We're getting a larger structure. But regardless, regardless, that's only one thing for the board to consider. It's an application for a special permit. And, and this board is required to look at. I, I, it sounds to me as if town council is saying, well, don't look at the structure at all. Just look at the lot. Well, the lot is the same lot that's been there since 1913 or whenever it was. If you use her logic, why are we even here for a special permit? Because the lot's not going to change. What's changing is what they're proposing to put on the lot, and it's a larger structure. And the building commissioner says it needs a special permit. And I think we all agree in this room, it needs a special permit. Well, then let's look at the criteria that is required of a special permit. And one of the things we look at is, is it in keeping with the neighborhood? And in fact, that's exactly why it was denied in 1986, because it wasn't in keeping with the neighborhood visual character, and so on and so forth. Of course you look at the structure here. That's why we're here. We're going from one story to three on a 2,900 square foot lot. Of course, that's what we're looking at. It may comply with height requirements and setbacks and so on and so forth, but it's on a 2,900 square foot lot, which means even if it is in conformity with dimensional regulations, it still requires a special permit because this isn't the kind of everyday lot that everybody, that we see every day. This is a very unique situation. It's not a 5,000 square foot lot protected under state law. It's not protected under your, our own zoning bylaw, which I think in the RSC district goes to 7,500 or 7,200 square feet. This is a unicorn. This is a really exceptional situation. Of course, we can look at the size of the structure.
Anybody have any more questions for any?
All three attorneys.
May I make a comment on this point specifically?
Not yet. We just finished up with the board. Anybody have any questions for any other, any of the three attorneys?
I'd like to hear from the public and maybe we might follow up.
Anybody have any further? I guess you can be a bat. We're going to go public, okay, Kev?
Yep, absolutely.
Attorney forward, sorry.
I've been called worse. I'll wait tonight.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mackenzie Flynn from 407 Maravista. I was one of the authors and signatories on the joint letter of opposition that was submitted to you earlier this week. And I was not planning on making a statement, but I've heard some things that I feel the need to respond to based on my research. I, I would like to address town council's comment first, that this evaluation all needs to be tied to lot size. I think we can reconcile town council's perspective with what Mr. LeBert's just provided because Bransford versus the zoning board of appeals of Edgar Town stated that creating a distinction in treatment between a non-conforming structure and a non-conforming lot is one that analytically and practically should not be made. The two concepts are intertwined and separating them would permit a landowner, owner to circumvent valid and useful minimum lot area requirements. So in that respect, all of the dimensional requirements are tied to lot size because it's all relative. So, you know, where the, where the bylaws provide that a structure can be 34 feet, it's also contemplating a, you know, a lot size that conforms to the requirements or at least complies with, you know, the grandfathered 5,000 square feet under Massachusetts law. You can see other examples in the bylaws where the requirements are relative to other requirements. So for example, setbacks change relative to height. Bottom line is that I think we actually can reconcile those two perspectives and the analysis can include all of the factors under section 12.1E in looking at it in its totality because they're not really separate. The, you know, the question is, is this structure appropriate for the non-conforming lot? Does it exacerbate and intensify the non-conforming nature of this very undersized lot? And that's what we're here to, you know, to try to establish. I would also like to address Attorney Clowers' comment earlier that our joint letter of opposition suggested that any alteration to a structure would, would need to meet 40,000 square foot lot size requirement. That is not the case and, and that is not what we expressed in our letter. Pursuant to section 240 11.1A, an alteration to a structure must meet the minimum requirements set forth in article 11, the dimensional requirements, unless otherwise specifically provided in article 11 or in Massachusetts general law 40A6. Massachusetts general law 40A6, as we, as we know, is where lots could be grandfathered in if they are 5,000 square feet or more. So this particular application does not qualify for that exception to the requirements of section 11A1, meaning that this application is required to meet the minimum requirements, including lot size. So in that respect, they have not eliminated all non-conformities. And the height greatly intensifies the non-conformity of the lot. The size greatly intensifies it, the, the shape and the style. Furthermore, under section 240 10.2A 3B, even if the change would maintain or lessen an existing non-conformity, it may still be considered substantially more detrimental when the board considers whether the change creates new dimensional non-conformity, impairs views and vistas, or does not reasonably conform to the average dimensions found in the neighborhood. This section of the bylaw makes clear that even if other dimensional non-conformities are satisfied, it can still be substantially more detrimental. It can still intensify what non-conformities do exist. And that is the case here. You know, those, those questions, whether it would impair views and vistas and whether it would conform to the average dimensions in the neighborhood, those are, are questions of fact and to some extent, opinion. So in making that determination, I would ask the board to heavily weigh how much opposition this application has received. The fact that the neighborhood has shown up time and time again over the last few years shows that in the, in the opinion of the public, in the opinion of Falmouth residents in the neighborhood at large, this, this is not going to look right. This is not going to fit and it will be substantially worse than what's there. The existing non-conforming structure really isn't bothering anyone. It, it's in character with the neighborhood. It's, it's charming and quaint. What they're proposing to replace it with would be substantially worse than the existing non-conforming structure. And, and I think the fact that, you know, we've all shown up time and time again should weigh very heavily, heavily in establishing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else wants to come on up?
Good evening. I'm Steve Galouli, 10 Sycamore Street. We were across the street from this home. Just had a couple of brief things that I wanted to bring to the board. A little bit frustrated, I must say. I must start off by saying, here we are again. Three years, sixth time, I think, this application's been before this board, including withdrawals and reschedules and whatevers. That's abusive process, in my opinion. I am not an attorney. I'm not a board member. That's pushing the limits of the neighborhood's tolerance. But yet, here we are again. Here we are again to express exactly as you just heard. This, this application is not in consistency with our neighborhood. We are not in, in favor of this application. This board, and back in 2022, I believe, at the end of that meeting, if you recall, there was a conversation as the applicant withdrew. And the conversation was, this board said, you know, we would, to characterize, you can go back for the quotes, you said, this board would be interested in an application of the existing structure elevated out of the flood zone, which is by right, if you want to renovate the existing structure and bring it up to that compliance, the board would like to hear something like that. The board also said, if you wanted to do other kinds of modifications, a little bit at a time, you may not be required to elevate it out of the flood zone because of the way the rules work. You could, you could pursue that path as well. And the point being, this applicant hasn't approached any of those other options to get to the point of having a habitable structure that they say that they want. What they've continuously come back to this board with is application after application for a multi-story tremendous tower with a fourth deck, fourth floor deck, looking down into the neighboring bedrooms, bathrooms, outdoor showers. That is what is non-conforming. I don't, not using the term in a legal sense, but in my sense, that is non-conforming with the character of our neighborhood. You drove through our street, you don't see houses like this in that neighborhood. You don't see them on Manant either. You don't see them, even on Surf Drive, you don't see them this clustered together with rooftop decks looking down on top of each other. So that's what's, in my mind, inconsistent with the neighborhood. And I think it's inconsistent with this process to keep making us come back here. Third time this spring, May, then June, then it was rescheduled down to August. That's a burden on the community. It's a burden on the neighborhood. We're happy to bear that burden because we're defending our rights as neighbors. But this isn't a simple renovation where someone says, hey, I'm just trying to put an outdoor shower on the back of my house and the neighbor doesn't want it that close to the property line. That's a small issue that we could discuss. This is a towering structure. I'm an EMT. I don't know how you'd ever get a victim off the roof of that house. Falmouth doesn't have a truck that can come down that street and get a victim off the roof of that house. You can't bring a stair chair down, a stair, on a spiral staircase on the outside of the house. You're going to have to call in the Barnstable Special Technical Squad to get them off the roof with elevation equipment. That's not consistent with our neighborhood. Again, I ask this board, you've heard all the arguments, you've heard all the technicalities, you've heard this argument before. You've seen substantially a very similar application, multi-story structure with a rooftop deck. And here we are again. And so I'm asking the board, as a neighbor and as a citizen, I appreciate your time as volunteers. It's fantastic that you spend the time to help our town maintain its visual character. I'm asking you again to reject this application. Thank you.
Anybody else want to come up? Let's give the public a chance first. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Brian Aspel. My mother Linda owns the property at 5 Sycamore Street, which is a direct abutter to 9 Sycamore Street. My mother could not be here this evening, but I speak with her full support and blessing on this matter. My family has been coming to Sycamore Street for almost 25 years now. It's a great neighborhood with homes of various sizes on both sides of the street, nearly all of which have been there since the 1920s, 1930s, and 1940s. Times change, owners come and go, and it's certainly understandable for property owners to have the desire to improve or expand their homes. However, in my humble opinion, the current application that is before you is out of character for the neighborhood in both size and scope for the existing lot. The proposed new structure will tower over the adjacent dwellings on all three sides with its projected minutes. It's not just the proposed overall height. There are other homes on the street that may be 34 feet high. I believe the height to the top of our roof gable is equal to or close to 34 feet high. But our roof is sloped or pitched in a gable style, which I believe contributes to reducing the appearance of its overall height. That is the same for nearly all of the other homes on the street. It may not seem fair to dictate the style or design of a neighbor's home, but in this case, there are other factors, which I mentioned, that I believe need to be taken into consideration, namely, the size of the lot, the positioning of the structure on the lot, and quite frankly, its design. In this case, the lot at 9 Sycamore Street is the smallest on the street by far, at just under 50% of the next smallest lot. The applicants have mentioned efforts to meet with and discuss their plans with the neighborhood. It's my understanding that there was a recent meeting with the applicants and several people from the neighborhood. Unfortunately, no one from my family was able to attend that meeting, so I can't speak specifically about what was discussed. But it is my general understanding from discussions with neighbors that there was not much of a productive dialogue with the applicants or a willingness to make any kind of compromises that might be amenable to the neighborhood. And I do know the neighborhood had discussions in advance of that meeting about designs that would be agreeable to abutters and others, so the applicants could obtain the new construction square feet that they reportedly desire while still being able to elevate the dwelling on peers, which is something I understand that they have maintained is paramount to their wishes. This application and process has been ongoing now for just about three years. I can imagine the entire process has become tiresome for the applicants. I can say that it has for the neighborhood. My family does not at all seek to impose or oppose any neighbors who want to renovate, improve, or even necessarily increase the height of their home by building up. It's just that in this particular instance, we are opposed to the current design and plans. In closing, my family is in agreement with and gladly lent our names in support of the opposition letter that was prepared and submitted by the Flins. There are technical points outlined in that letter on why the application should not be approved, which I'm not qualified to discuss or mention. However, we at 5 Sycamore Street, we wholeheartedly agree with the sentiment of that letter, and we stand in unison with the other many neighbors who oppose this application. I truly hope that the zoning board can see the extent of the opposition from all of the abutters and many others throughout the adjacent neighborhoods who would be adversely impacted by this application if it were to be approved. For these reasons, I strongly urge the board to vote against the application that is before you this evening. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Anybody else want to take a shot at it up here at the podium? Anybody have any further questions up here?
Yes. I've got one coming.
One coming.
Hi, my name is Bill Flynn, owner of 407 Maravista. And this has again been three years and, and going on. Just want to keep this brief, and that is that Mr. Duffy has been talking about the what ifs. What if, what if this all happened and a big storm would occur? That's a big what if, but at the same time, we're talking about a self-improvement. we're talking about a self-imposed hardship. All right? Need to put special back into the, for a special permit. Put meaning back into that. The, we're opposed to this project is substantially more detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. If that bylaw is in the books and this doesn't fit, I don't know what would. It is the definition of it. It is the poster child for what we're talking about right now. We firmly oppose this. This is not something that they need to do. This is something that they want to do. There are alternatives. We brought that to attention. That had they taken the board's suggestion three years ago and did this in stages, they claim right now that they'd only spend about $100,000. But if they started from the beginning, they would have been able to spend over $350,000 to this point or more, which would be substantial amount of money for basic upgrades and improvements in what they're asking for. They claim that they're improving parking because there is none. There's about five cars in the driveway. I don't know how many more you would get than that. So, they're claiming that this will improve their parking. Again, if this bylaw should not be in there because this is the poster child of it, and we strongly object to this application. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure yet. Does the applicant need a break? Does the applicant need a break? You're all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anybody else from Falmouth that would like to speak tonight? Public. Everybody's all set? Is there anybody that's from Falmouth that wants to speak tonight? We have a gentleman that's not from here that would like to speak. We want to give our peeps an opportunity. I guess no one else. So come on up.
I can't be a peep.
You can be a peep.
And again, if I can, for the public as well. I mean, I've been studying zoning for 43 years, and I've been studying the nonconforming section. 1976, it was written. I told you, I sat down with the person that wrote it for Barbara Gray's office. And I deal in a lot of different towns with doing consulting work. I'm not an attorney. I'm not a lawyer. I don't have to be. I have a lot of lawyers ask me questions about this stuff. A lot of towns have difficulties with their local zoning bylaws and how they write these sections. And I can see confusion on people's faces. They ask town council. They make it so confusing when it goes to town meeting. People don't understand what they're voting for or not voting for. There's been a lot of talk tonight about lots that are less than 5,000 square feet from people in the public, as well as the attorneys. The 5,000-square-foot section of 48.6, okay, pertains to lots that have never had construction on them before. It's a vacant lot that somebody owns that has 5,000 square feet on a street, excuse me, 50 feet on a street and 5,000 square feet of area. If you've never built on that and you don't own any land around it and haven't owned any land around it since it became a nonconforming lot, that is available for a spot for a house. If you own two of those lots together, if they're in the same name, they automatically merge together. I know that because I had the case on that, one of the leading cases in Massachusetts, Preston versus Hull. But right now, anybody who's got a dwelling on a lot, whether it has 100 square feet or whether it's got 5,000 square feet, whether it has any frontage or not, if there's a dwelling on it, it is protected under 48 Section 6. And what's protected doesn't have to be the lot. The lot's there already. It's the structure that's on it. And those are controlled by 48 Section 6, and it's the second accept clause, which talks about single and two-family residential structures, which talks about the right to rebuild them. For everybody that's here that's on an undersized lot, you have a right to rebuild those houses, okay? And I've heard, this house is much bigger, okay? Well, that's up to you guys to decide. If you base it on square footage and the square footage in the record is the same, they're entitled to the permit, okay? I've heard one of the attorneys say, "This is a much larger house." It's a reconfigured house, okay? It's going from a house that doesn't conform to the setbacks, and they're pulling it back and they're going up higher. I'm sure they don't want to meet FEMA compliance. Nobody does. Nobody wants to meet FEMA compliance. But you have to, okay? That's what FEMA wants. That's what the government wants. That's what they need to do, okay? This, to me, seems like, I'm gonna take the neighborhood out of it for a second. Based on the decisions that I've read, and I've read a lot of the decisions that this board has made, okay, in regards to height, okay? I think it was Indiana Ave, okay? That one was a nonconforming lot, undersized. They went to 34 foot, 10 inches high. And in your decision, you made a finding that said that was per the bylaw, okay? If you don't meet the setbacks, if you're gonna be too close to the property line and they want to go up higher, like the older one that these people wanted to do, you can say no, because that's within the setback area, okay? That's why I didn't comply. That's why that got denied, because the height going up was within the setback area. This one, the height going up, is not within the setback area. It actually meets all the setbacks. So it's just a reconfiguration of the house. So to me, the only thing you have to decide is, is this a larger house or is it not a larger house? I'll stop it at that unless somebody's got a question. But there's a lot of confusion around it, and I'm surprised that, I understand attorneys are here to represent their clients, and I get that, okay? They have to do that. That's what they get paid for, okay? But nobody should add confusion to exactly what's going on.
Address the board, please, and speak into the microphone.
But, I understand, nobody should add confusion to what's going on. Nobody should throw a shot over the bow, okay, to confuse you, to start talking about variances and things like that. That's not even in play here, okay? This is a really simple application. Be it all that maybe nobody likes the house, okay? But logistically, from a zoning standpoint, it's reasonably a simple application. And I think that you should say in favor of it. They are reducing a lot of the nonconformities. And if the house is determined to be the same size or smaller than what was there, I think they should get the approval. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. We're gonna get into the battle of legal.
Do you want to take a two-minute break before we hear from the attorneys one more time? We're all set?
Can I have any other comments?
This is just getting repetitive, Madam Chairman.
As long as it's not repetitive.
It won't be repetitive. I would like to address the comment just made about Massachusetts 48.6. I have it in front of me.
This, Madam Chairman, I'm gonna object. I don't get lectured about what the law is. We have a-
Well, we just did. I wouldn't mind the other side of it.
Just to be honest with you.
Yeah, Mr. Bjorklund just said that it doesn't apply.
And they had too much time. But still, I think that she should be able to rebut.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Just take it quick, please.
Very quickly, Mr. Bjorklund said that this, that 48.6 does not apply because there was already a building on the lot. I have it in front of me. It very clearly applies to any change or substantial extension of a use to a building or special permit issued, you know, to an extension or structural change, any alteration or structure. It very clearly applies when there is an existing structure that's being altered.
Does she need the whole section?
Madam Chairman, the purpose of public comment is four of eighty from there, sir.
We're all set, sir. Thank you. You all set?
Yes, thank you.
Attorney Lawrence, would you like to wrap it up? Like, two minutes, please, and then we'll give attorney-
Sure. I just take a little bit of issue with what Mr. Bjorklund is saying. He's clearly implying that if the structure conforms to height, then it's a moot point. You gotta approve it. And I noticed he prefaces his comments to you by saying, "Well, I want to leave the neighborhood out of it." And then he talks to you about a house as if the neighborhood isn't a consideration here. This is a special permit application. And I think even my brother, Mr. Claro, would concede that. And we have to talk about impact on neighborhood visual character, including views and vistas, regardless of whether it's under 35 feet in height and is meeting the setbacks. It's a 2,900-square-foot lot. It's looked at differently than a conforming lot. So a conforming structure on a nonconforming lot isn't a structure there by right. That is Mr. Bjorklund's case. That's what that case says. You have to consider the impact. You have to consider the impact of a conforming structure on a nonconforming lot. You have to consider the impact on the neighborhood visual character. Of course you do.
Do you have a question for any particular-
I have a quick, just a quick question. And I don't care who answers the question. Because we have to consider the lot size, or we are considering the lot size here, do we in fact, are we in fact creating an opportunity for variance and hardship if this is denied? So I don't know what attorney's gonna answer this question, but no, the answer is no. I'm getting a no.
See, and even the non-lawyables say no.
And we shouldn't even be considering that, anyway.
Madam Chairman, I hire attorneys to get my way, and I don't know otherwise.
You're all set up? Okay. Everybody else up here is all set?
Thank you. There's been a lot of discussion tonight and a lot of conjecture, a lot of direction from abutters as to what we can or should do. But what's before you tonight is the application that we presented. And the application we presented takes a structure that is significantly nonconforming, front yard setback, to side yard setback to the west, one foot or less in each of those situations, and makes them entirely conforming. It takes a structure that is nonconforming as to lot coverage by structure and to lot coverage by structures, paving and parking, and makes it entirely conforming. This structure is entirely now conforming as to the dimensional regulations in our bylaw, the structure. The only nonconformity remaining is the lot size. That's not changing. We can't change that. But the lot size remains the same, but now with a new entirely conforming structure. I don't see how that can be substantially more detrimental than a lot with a wildly nonconforming structure. I believe, for all the reasons that were supposed tonight, that this board can and should grant the special permit. And I'd be happy to address any questions if there are any remaining. Otherwise, I think we've emptied the bag here.
We have. Any further questions? Everybody's all set up here? Mark?
I have no questions.
I'll make the motion then.
I'll make the motion. I thought you asked if any, I'm motioning close.
Second.
We have a motion closing.
A little quick on that, James.
We got lost without Scott. Any further discussion before we close? You all set? All set?
I'm all set. I think I've probably said enough tonight.
Agreed. All right. All of us ready to vote?
To close.
To close.
To close.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You're in it now. So the hearing's closed.
We're gonna have some discussion?
Yeah.
Who's gonna start?
I think you can, if you'd like, unless you want to start?
I've been here for, I think, about three years tonight. And this is by far, yeah, it is. I think tonight's my third. Yeah, exactly.
I thought you meant three years tonight was three years.
Three years tonight.
Whatever. Tonight was three years in and of itself. Now I was just listening to you.
Hey. I gotta do what I gotta do.
Yeah, I know. Dooby-dooby-do. Frank Sinatra said that. But there's a lot to cover here, but it stays right within the parameters of my thinking right from the beginning. On the first night, I said that you could work on this house and improve what exists there. You told me that was not correct. We just did one in North Falmouth. They were given a price of $1,001,000 for just over 300 grand. Now they got a house that's worth $1,005,000, and they can send their kids to school. I know it's not the same thing, but things like that can be done. And we've been through all this law. Everybody gives us advice. Well, there's something pretty basic in law called caveat emptor. And that applies to real estate as well. I don't see how anybody can argue that this isn't substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And speaking of neighborhood, I always tried to bring neighborhood into it, like when we did our bulk calculations. And I think, to be honest, many members in this board in the past have given more deference to neighborhoods than even I would have. But you can't deny that this neighborhood is pretty much in unison. And it certainly appears from the outset that, you know, whatever, I might get in trouble for saying this, but they wanted this tower with their ocean view, and they weren't gonna be denied. And the numbers, the numbers have been played around with this thing and stretched and whatever. I can't vote for this.
Frank?
I agree with Mr. Finneran. This is probably the most difficult case that I've sat on, and I've been here a couple weeks short of three years, so.
Do I look older?
I, this, I, first of all, I believe that the lot is a buildable lot. All of the argument, all of the time we spent arguing about whether or not this is a buildable lot, I disagree with. It is a buildable lot. It was built upon at one point, and the 5,000-square-foot requirement in Chapter 48, Section 6, applies to lots that have never been built upon. This has been built upon, and according to the property record card that I looked at in the assessor's office, it was built in 1940. So we've had almost 85 years of a house on this lot. We've agreed that we are hearing a special permit. The question about whether or not this property even requires a special permit is not before us. We're not gonna decide it. But the existing structure is a nonconforming structure. And under Section 240, 10.2A, when we're dealing with a nonconforming structure, we look at the proposed structure, and we have to make a determination if it shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconforming structure. Now, in this particular situation, a couple of things are happening. Number one, they're taking a nonconforming structure with some serious nonconformities as far as setbacks go, and they're gonna propose or build a structure that conforms to the zoning, to the requirements of the zoning bylaw with respect to setback requirements. They're also conforming to the zoning bylaw with respect to height. 35, I think it's 34 feet. 34 feet. The bylaw allows for 35. The reason they're going up is they have to comply with the law. The law requires, they're in a VE15 zone, which means that they have to go to 15 feet plus two feet so that the first floor has to be 17 feet above the flood zone. They're required to do that. This is not something they want to do. They're required to do it. And I don't see why we can find, I don't see how we can find that a property that conforms to a building code and the provision of the zoning bylaw is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I'm personally impressed by the fact that they are trying to eliminate the nonconformities here. In terms, this property conforms, as far as the footprint of the property, they're taking an existing structure with a 1,025-foot square foot footprint, reducing it to 586 square feet. They're taking this property that has 720 square feet of habitable space, they're reducing it to 570 square feet. They're making every effort to conform to the zoning and to actually minimize this building. This is not a situation where there's a McMansion being built. This is not a situation where there's a McMansion being built. I know it's taller. It may appear larger, but it's really not. It's not a McMansion-type situation. The property is also located on a sewer where four bedrooms are allowed. That has to, I think, be considered. We did not have, in our referrals to this project, we didn't really have any opposition from town departments. The Conservation Commission has determined that they have issued an order of condition for the property, and they amended a previous order of condition on the property to allow this property to be built. There was a question or comment raised about what happens if somebody needs emergency services on the roof. Well, the fire department weighed in and said they have no comment. So I'm in favor of this project. I think it's a reasonable effort to comply with the zoning bylaw, and I would vote for it.
I'll speak next before you, Jim, if that's okay? I also am glad we settled the special permit part, but that's where I lie in where my problem is, is it's, I feel detrimental to the neighborhood in my mind. I don't like the looking down into the other people's outside showers. I definitely don't like that at all. And I know I'm not probably supposed to say it, but there'll be a rental aspect to it. And that bothers me also. And that's all I have. Jim?
Thank you. So I agree with the analysis of Mr. Duffy. This is a buildable or otherwise protected lot, albeit it's a very small one. During the previous applications, I was against, and I would have voted against, the application at that time because there were continued to exist nonconformities as to setbacks, as well as other nonconformities, and I just didn't think that there was enough concession. This application, though, for the same reasons that Mr. Duffy's just gone through, essentially has eliminated, I cannot apply as a matter of law, and I'm very much in empathy with the neighbors, but we're here to apply the zoning statute. I think that deny this would be arbitrary and capricious, and we could not justify it based on facts, given that the footprint of the actual house is being eliminated. I asked a specific question in reading the Borland case that the SJC found issue because the footprint was being increased. This is being decreased. Town council weighed in on this issue, that it is in fact distinguishable. Height going up, we have, this board has continuously held that FEMA flood compliance, we've almost never penalized an applicant for a special permit due to height, which is still within right at 34 feet. We've never penalized an applicant for coming into compliance with FEMA flood codes. It's a compelling reason to ensure coastal resiliency. It causes insurance rates overall to come down when properties are elevated above identified flood planes. Neighborhoods are changing because of this. If you look down Surf Drive, the houses along Surf Drive and in the flood zones there, I used to ride my bike to Woods Hole every day in 1980, the houses that are there now versus after post hurricane Bob are certainly not what was there 20, 30, 40 years ago. So that, although the height is going up, there's a compelling reason. The app, I, this is, I think, with the second or third evolution of this application, but this, again, by eliminating all the nonconformities, I can't find that it is more detrimental. We've never held, in terms of views and vistas, there is no, that's a private right if someone has recorded viewies, but we've never held that as a reason. And again, I would consider the FEMA flood compliance to be a compelling reason. I am troubled by the rooftop deck. I think that could or should be eliminated. I don't think it's necessary. I wouldn't necessarily want someone towering above me, but again, we're not an architectural review board.
Probably my biggest problem.
I would begrudgingly have to vote to approve this, given that the only nonconformity left is the lot size, which I believe is protected. Thank you.
Go ahead, Tom.
I mean, although.
Nick's the vote.
Nick's the vote.
Yeah, he can.
Although I may disagree with the style of this property, but what the applicant has done is to bring so much of this into conformity that I think it has a tremendous beneficial effect to the neighborhood. Even if I dislike that it's tall, we can't penalize them for what FEMA requires, they've got to go up. They have no choice. I would love to see, if this board were to approve this, I would like to see a condition that the roof, both roof decks be eliminated, because I think because of the height, it's going to be looking into neighboring properties, and I think because of the size of the lot, that is detrimental. But I think if you eliminate the rooftop decks, both of them, it is less detrimental. What, my point is this, what they've done to bring this property into conformity, other than lot size, which you can nothing about, is, I think, tremendous benefit to the community. And I would certainly hope that this board would vote to approve it if, in fact, they had eliminated these roof decks.
Nick? We all said what you want to say.
Yeah, I'm pretty, I'm good.
Go left.
Yeah, I'm good.
So I think we've all spoke.
So I think it's an appropriate motion to deny the application for the special permit.
Madam Chair, you made a comment that I'd like to address if you'd be willing to reopen.
Closed here.
We're not going to reopen.
But in fairness, a comment came up that hadn't come up at all during tonight's conversation. And I'd love to be able to address it because I think it speaks to your concern.
Anybody?
We'd have to reopen.
We'd have to reopen?
No, I'm not.
That ain't happening. We've been here six times.
So we have a motion to deny.
I'll second that.
Before let's vote it, Madam Chairman, we've.
I'll withdraw my second. You speak because you get the chance. Nobody else does. See how special you are.
Thank you. The only suggestion I might have is if the applicant wants to withdraw, we've traditionally given the option to do so before the.
To that.
We've been, been earlier already.
So, Madam Chair, you made a comment about the roof deck and that being your biggest concern.
Kevin, it's closed. He asked you if you'd like to withdraw without prejudice.
May I have 10 seconds to speak?
Certainly.
While he's conferring, the only thing I would do, if this does go to a vote, to
make sure that we put sufficient findings one way or the other depending on.
Yeah, we're going to have to do specific findings.
Are we going to approve it?
Madam Chair, having heard your comment and what you stated as your concern, we would like to request a motion to withdraw without prejudice so that we can address that comment.
So procedurally, I'll make a motion to reopen to allow discussion and that particular request be made, Madam Chairman. Because I'm just concerned that someone's going to make an appeal about improper, no?
We just consider.
Let's withdraw. We'll talk it back up again.
Applicant has requested to withdraw.
But then we just go on for weeks and hours. Maybe we can resolve this in 10 minutes. Maybe we can't. I don't know.
Not without pictures in front of me. I, you know, I mean, we've been, this is just too much, too many numbers thrown around too much.
I would rather see a new plan.
Okay. Perfectly fine, and we'd be happy to do so.
All right. So we're, he's accepting withdrawal without prejudice, right? Or we?
I'll make a motion to accept Attorney Clowers' withdrawal without prejudice.
From a procedural standpoint, I think you need to reopen it for me to request.
I'll make a motion to reopen to.
With a limited purpose of entertaining a motion to withdraw. Second?
Would there be public comment on the motion to withdraw?
No.
Excuse me?
Would a public comment be allowed on the motion? We're reopening a hearing?
No.
All those in favor of the reopening of the closing? Aye. Opposed?
I motion that we accept Attorney Clowers.
Let's get the request now and then.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I'd like to formally request that the board make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
I motion we accept.
Could I rehearse the motion?
No.
Nope. Second? We have a motion to second to accept the withdrawal. Are you okay legally?
I believe so.
We okay?
Yes.
All set? We've accepted the motion to withdraw. In favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
None.
Thank you. I know this has been a long night and a lot of consideration, and we appreciate your time and thoughtfulness on this matter.
Let's take a two-minute break. Two-minute break, please.
Got nice and quiet in here. All right, well, moving on to 31 Priscilla Street, the Garlands.
Okay.
Frank's gonna open it up and, you know.
We have here, this is application zero forty-five of the year 2025, Robert Garland. He's applied to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to section twelve, excuse me, two forty, ten point two A of the Falmouth zoning bylaw to construct an addition to the first floor and an addition and a partial second floor addition, increasing lot coverage by structure. Properties located at thirty-one Priscilla Street in East Falmouth. For some of the details. The property is in an RC zoning district. I didn't note any overlay districts. The flood zone is X. Existing property is sixteen hundred and four square feet. It's a single-family dwelling. The proposal is for a single-family dwelling of seventeen hundred and sixty-seven square feet. The lot size is seven thousand two hundred square feet. It is in a zoning district which currently requires a minimum of forty thousand square feet. There are no previous zoning board of appeals decisions on file. The street frontage is ninety feet in a zoning district which currently requires one hundred square feet. Priscilla Street is a public right-of-way at this particular location. We have some non-conformities. The existing non-conformity, lot coverage by structure is twenty-two point three percent. It will increase to twenty-four point five percent. The limit is twenty percent. We're allowed to go up to twenty-five percent by special permit. The lot coverage by structure, parking and paving is thirty-one point eight percent. It'll be increased to thirty-four point one percent. The limit is forty percent, so it's within the limit of the zoning bylaw. The setbacks, the current east setback is thirty-one point four feet. The west setback is eighteen point four feet. The street, which is the north setback, is twenty-one point three feet, which is non-conforming. Twenty-five is required and the south is eighteen point, excuse me, eleven point eight feet, so that conforms. The height of the building is currently fifteen feet. It will be increased to twenty-three feet. As far as referrals from town departments, the engineering department has advised us that stormwater runoff should be contained on the property and they've, the contractor shall apply the erosion and sediment control standards during construction. The board of health has advised us that the property's on sewer. Conservation commission has no comment. The water department says they are satisfied and the building department has no comment. There are no letters of opposition or no letters of support on the file. We also have a note that the homeowner has enlarged door casings for an office and storage area so that they cannot be used as a bedroom.
Okay, yeah, I'm like, welcome. Hi, I am Heather Marshall. I'm the architect representing Bob Garland at thirty-one Priscilla. You had mentioned all the things that I was gonna mention on the non-conformities. It is a non-conform, pre-existing non-conformant lot and we are proposing to build a single-story addition to the side and then a second, second story addition on a portion of the existing house. We are proposed to increase the lot coverage by structure to twenty-four point five percent. We understand that we can go up to twenty-five percent and we have neighbors at thirty-two Priscilla that are currently at twenty-five point oh-two percent and we are well within the thirty-five foot zoning height. So we are seeking for a special permit to move forward.
May I just ask a question, I don't know, out of order, but you talk about increasing lot coverage by structure, but I don't see you've applied for that permit. Under section two forty, eleven point three A four, we're allowed to give you up to twenty-five percent and in fact, you are already non-conforming and you're gonna increase to non-conformity. So I think, Madam Chair, that we have to have an amendment to this application to ask them if they would amend their application and I hope they could do it orally for a special permit under two forty, eleven point three A four.
Do you understand that? Do you wanna read my book or anything?
Yeah, no, I would love to, cuz I'm from Citrus, so.
Can you give it out for ya?
It's a no, it's a no brainer.
You just forgot to apply for the right special permit. We just tell you to apply for the right.
Definitely, okay.
Just give it a minute and then we'll, we'll. Can be amended tonight.
Yes. So we just need to apply for the right permit. Yes, we'll amend it.
Okay.
Okay, then, I would move that they, the application be amended to include an application under, for a special permit under section two forty, eleven point three A four, to approve lot coverage by structure of twenty-four point five, uh, excuse me, yeah, twenty-five foot one five.
Twenty-four point five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion about it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Your drawings were great, by the way. I even said that when I was in the office to the, to the staff.
We tried to keep it.
No, I, I thought they were great.
Thank you.
Just my opinion.
All right.
Mark, you wanna start off on the project?
Yeah, sure. I echo her comment.
We're not done.
You're not done.
We just started. We haven't voted yet. The compliments weren't over. But honestly, I, I do echo that. I think it's, it's, it's nice. It's, um, had a few here. I haven't seen one like this. This is, other than to say that I used to, up until last year, I owned a house on one year lot comparison sheet right over the fence. I, I think it's very nice and well within what you're entitled to and if the completed project's as nice as the drawings, it'll be an improvement in the neighborhood, for sure.
Thank you.
Frank, do you have anything?
No, I visited the property and I think the application and the proposal is appropriate.
Yeah, I did the same. I drove around and there's, there's, I think a cape.
That's the tire tracks in the backyard.
That's. There's, um, that's cape, I think, across the street. I mean, there's several, it, it changes up, ranch cape, ranch cape.
Yeah, it's a ranch neighborhood that's been mon, they're slowly being modified over.
Yeah, it does fit in well.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
First, thank you for your patience tonight. You got behind a contentious issue, so thank you. Just a couple of quick, just to confirm, the existing shed is going to be removed on the lot?
Yeah, that's how we were able to keep it under twenty-five percent.
Plans are very nice. This will definitely be a, a very nice improvement. One thing the board is concerned with sometimes is illegal bedroom creep.
Yep.
This is sewed.
Oh, no, I understand.
Okay.
I know that the, I see that the finished, office, office space is gonna be finished in the basement. Do you have any objections if we condition the storage area, workshop and laundry and utilities remain unfinished for your plans?
Yeah, they remain unfinished, yes. And we also amended the floor, floor plan last, last week to show those doors being removed.
Yes, I saw it, the case openings to make sure they're not considered a bedroom.
Yep.
Um, what's the ridge height?
With the proposed?
Yes.
It's twenty-two six or twenty-two four.
Well below. Thank you, those are the only questions I have. Thank you very much.
I was out there, it, I think it fits in very nicely. It's a tremendous improvement. My only question is, and I'm just not seeing a plan, what is the distance from the proposed addition to the front lot line?
Uh, it's a little bit further back, so.
Yeah.
Right now, the existing front setback is twenty-one five and the.
You just don't have a measurement for the.
Yeah, hold on. It shouldn't be like two.
Fifteen four to the side, slightly more than twenty-one.
Twenty-one three.
Three, that's to the, but it's actually a little more.
So, oh, yeah, it's equal, equal, so I don't have it scaled.
It's not, it's not gonna.
It should be about like, it's, I went.
It goes in five feet. That's what I'm looking for, five feet. Okay, thank you. How that, those all look like.
All set? Nick, you have any?
Yeah, almost set. Looks great.
Can I just confirm what your question was, Tony? You did the.
I was, there was no dimension from the proposed addition.
To the front setback.
To the front lot line and I was just asking what that is. It's now been determined to be twenty-six feet, twenty-six feet, I think that's three inches or five inches.
Uh, five inches.
Okay. That's all I was asking, what that dimension was.
Anybody else have any further questions, folks in the public? All set? Anybody from the public wanna comment on this? Mark, wanna help me out?
I motion to close them, Madam Chair.
I'll second.
We have a motion to close and do you have anything further?
Nope.
You're all set? Everybody else up here is all set to close? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None?
Excellent, now.
So we have a structure in an RC zoning.
Motion to approve with conditions.
Second.
We have a structure in an RC zoning district, no overlay districts, existing structure, single-family dwelling, sixteen hundred four square feet. The proposal is to increase it to seventeen hundred sixty-seven square feet. Flood zone is X. There is an existing non-conformity with respect to the lot coverage by structure. It is currently twenty-two point three percent. Will be increased to twenty-two point four percent. The applicant has amended their application to apply for a special permit under section two forty, eleven point three A four, to increase it to twenty-four point five percent, which is within the twenty-five percent that we are allowed to give. Lot coverage by structure average in the neighborhood is eighteen point twenty-two percent, according to a worksheet submitted with the application. Lot coverage by structure, parking and paving conforms design. With respect to the setbacks, there will be one change in the setback. The easterly sideline is gonna be reduced from thirty-one point four to fifteen point four. The remaining setbacks are the same. The, we have already approvals from the engineering. There's a statement made during the hearing that the shed will be removed. That will be a condition of the special permit granted. We have under section two forty, ten point two A of the zoning bylaw, pre-existing non-conforming structures may be extended, altered or changed by special permit of the zoning board of appeals. They shall not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing structures and we so determine that to be the case. There's a slight increase in the non-conformity, but it will not be more detrimental, does not impair views or vistas and it reasonably conforms to neighborhood averages under section two forty, twelve point one E, criteria for a special permit. We make a determination that the site is adequate for the proposed use, site is suitable for the proposed use, there's no impact on traffic flow and safety, there's no reported impacts on neighborhood visual character, views or vistas, there's adequate sewage, it's on the sewer, there's adequate utilities and there's no impact on affordable housing. And with respect to the special permit under section two forty, eleven point three A four, lot coverage by structure may be up to a maximum of twenty-five percent. This will be twenty-four point five percent. That the site, size and height of the proposed structure are relative to the neigh, are conformed to relative, conform to the relative neighbor, conform to the neighborhood averages. There's no proposed, there's no testimony that it will adverse the effect by shadows on adjacent properties. Views and vistas from public ways are not affected and there's no impact on coastal, on nitrogen and coastal bay embankments because of properties on the sewer.
The existing non-conformity as to lot coverage is eliminated by virtue of the special permit, bringing the house more in compliance with the zoning bylaw.
Did you get five letters in favor, Frank?
Okay, no opposition offered at the hearing.
I didn't see any in the file.
I saw, I thought I saw five, like a, like a.
There are five?
Yeah.
Okay, five letters, five letters in support.
Yeah.
Five letters of support.
On support, yeah. Note, the office to remain office?
I just looked at this, the areas on the plan indicating in the basement are to remain unfinished.
No other buildings on the lot?
No additional lot coverage.
No additional lot coverage.
Standard hours of work.
Per plans, I don't have my sheet with all my stuff. Work hours, do you know the work hours in?
That's for the construction.
Eight, eight to seven Monday through Friday.
Seven, eight to seventeen, Monday through Saturday.
Seven to seven, yeah, eight to.
I mean, Monday through Friday.
Yeah.
Eight to four on Saturdays. We'll write it down for you.
Nothing else on this?
And the, the thing you may have a problem with in that neighborhood is when the construction all has to stay on site. You might need to contact the police to help or, you know, whatever needs to happen in that case. Any other conditions anybody can think of? Any other conditions, Maureen?
Uh, no further structures, right?
Yeah, we did that one. I think that's it, right? We're all set? We have a motion and a second and we have everything. We're all set? Everybody ready to vote?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, now I can go, thank you. You threw me off at the amended part. All right, thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
You too.
All right, next up at that, we have a variance for zero and twenty-two Deer Pond Road in East Falmouth.
Okay, this is application zero four seven of the year 2025. Joshua L. and Melissa O'Brien have applied to the zoning board of appeals for a variance pursuant to section two forty, eleven point four A one I and two forty, twelve point three A of the code of Falmouth, which is the zoning bylaw, to allow a shed to be located in the front yard less than fifty feet from the property line. Again, the property is at twenty-two Deer Pond Road, that's in East Falmouth in the Pinecrest Beach neighborhood. The zoning district is A G A. There's quite a few overlay districts reported here in the file. It's in the Wetlands Resource Area, Coastal Pond Overlay District, Water Resource Protection District, Wildlife Corridor and a National Heritage Endangered Species Protected District. There's an existing shed on the property. It already exists. It's two hundred and twelve square feet. Now, there's a little oddity here. There are two lots. The first lot is twelve hundred, excuse me, twelve thousand two hundred thirty-one square feet. The second lot is four thousand nine hundred twenty-two square feet. They have been combined, combined by an approved plan at the planning board, so the new lot is seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty-three square feet. That comes to, and it's in a zoning district where the current minimum is forty-five thousand. The street frontage is one hundred ninety feet in the zoning district, which requires a hundred feet, so it conforms. Deer Pond Road is a private right-of-way at this particular location. The lot coverage by structure is twelve percent, which is within the twenty percent limit of the zoning bylaw. Lot coverage by structure, parking and paving is thirty point seven percent, which is within the forty percent allowed by the zoning bylaw. The non-conformity here is the shed, which is one point seven feet from the sideline property line at Deer Pond Road. And there's also a setback from the pond, it's on Deer Pond, ten feet from Deer Pond. There's nothing in the file indicating the height of the structure, the shed, and it clearly appears to be less than thirty-five feet tall. Engineering, no comment. Board of Health, no comment. Conservation told us they have approved the prop, the shed as is. There's, advised us that there's an outstanding enforcement order dated February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, and that the applicant must continue to comply with the enforcement order. That's not a zoning order, it's a conservation order. Water department had no comment. The building department noted that the lot had merged and that all plans have to be recorded in the registry of deeds to complete the lot merger. I noted no letters in support or no letters in opposition in the file. And.
Oops, that's all I had to.
That's my notes.
Yeah, that's it. Come on.
All right. Last one standing.
Thank you for your patience tonight.
Thank you. Does this automatically shut up, Ashley, or?
I think it's just.
It was resting.
Yeah. Password or?
Is it password? Yeah, it's right at the top.
Oh. Let me check this. Is Elon Musk to help? Let's pull up a couple of things here. So you can look at that when the time comes. Thought that was interesting. So that's a shedding question. So after all the interesting things, got to sit through, this is, this is why we are here tonight. Appreciate you having us here to hear our story. A little bit about us, I'm Josh O'Brien. I'm here with my wife Melissa, with the property owners of twenty-two Deer Pond and Zero, which is now twenty-two Deer Pond Road. Our neighbors were here and then it got too late, so they're not here, but I'd like to acknowledge that they came to support us tonight as well. Thank you all for hearing us. This is quite a thing. We've never sat through a zoning board meeting like this before, or ever, so, pretty interesting. A little bit about us, moved to Falmouth two thousand sixteen, I was stationed at Otis, Cape Cod Air Station Cape Cod, or Coast Guard Air Station Cape Cod, to be exact. So that's when we got to town. We bought this property in two thousand eighteen. We've owned it since then. We were then able to buy Zero Deer Pond Road, which is the, the lot right next to it, later on, to combine the two lots eventually. My wife and I have volunteered around town quite extensively. We're happy to be here in Falmouth. It's a great town, so, so thank you. After twenty years of traveling around with the military, this is, this is where we wanna be eventually. So then, tell you a little bit about the property. Just make it interesting. So this is the nineteen sixty-eight flyover. Their area was developed in nineteen sixty-four. The property was built in nineteen sixty-seven. This is a house here. This is Zero Deer Pond, which used to be the beach and as you can see, was all built on a, on fill and aggregate and was essentially a sandpit back in the day. That being said, it has its challenges, that's why I bring that up. It's a really relatively small house with dated functionality. There's no storage space, there's no attic, there's no garage and the basement is small, has a couple bedrooms in it, so we really don't have any storage in the house. We do have the small shed on the property, but that's, this is big enough to hold a couple bikes and some golf bags, which is why we, we built the shed that we're discussing. It is a utility shed. It stores things that we need for the season and right now, unfortunately, my wife lost both of her parents within five months of each other, so it has a whole bunch of family heirlooms in it, but usually it's storing the kayaks and other beach things that we have during the win, during the winter and in the summer, stores, uh, winter, summer items. It's built from reclaimed lumber right after the COVID lockdown. There was reclaimed lumber all over town that was given to us, so it's scrap wood. Windows came from a remodel and the shiplap and everything else came from basically the restore. I guess I should restate that, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know all the zoning laws and also not a builder, carpenter, or anything to do with the trades, so I don't have expertise in this, but we did have an idea to build a shed, watched a lot of YouTube, learned how to build a shed, designed it and built it ourselves, which is why it's a little bit wonky. According to Mr. Street, it's not square, so I guess I'm embarrassed about that, but not really considering it's not my profession. So, like was mentioned, we did combine the two lots, both of which are still very small. You know, the, I think you mentioned the total combined lot size was less than seventeen thousand feet. We sited the shed where it is. Here, because it was, quite honestly, the best place to put it, it was out of the way, maximize some space here. And yes, I know it on the, on the site plan, it says it's one point seven feet from the line, property line, which is very true legally, but this is the side of the road that's usable and from here to here, I measured it out today just to be sure, is eighteen feet. Not that that matters, it's still well within the fifty feet that I believe you have to take into consideration, but I just, I at least wanted to point that out and hopefully you had a chance to, to walk the property before this. We have been working with the town departments for a while now. We met with Mr. Street, who gave me the, the way forward, which was step one to get with conservation, to see if they would, uh, help us with being able to keep it. As was previously mentioned, they said yes, with mitigation. And then the next step was to come for you to see if we could get your approval as well. And then Mr. Street said we could get the permit after all those things, hopefully. The shed has been there since twenty twenty-one, so it's been there for almost four years now. So hopefully you get a general idea of the property. I do think there are some questions that I'm supposed to be able to answer for you. So I'll pull those up here. The three big questions. Hopefully I'm going down the right road here and not wasting your time, but what are the special conditions relating to the soil conditions, shape, topography, the lander structures, which the variance is requested, especially affect the lander structures that do not affect generally the zoning district in which it is located? Well, I would argue that the entire property is special. It's like owning a honey badger as a pet. It's unruly, undisciplined, it's inappropriate and at times it wants to kill us, but that being said, we love the property and it, we've learned to live with its quirks, even the painful ones. I think the modern bylaws were written well before this property was developed. The lot's too small, the house is too big on it, it's too close to the pond, it's too close to the road. We're essentially being squeezed from all sides with nowhere to. We're essentially being squeezed from all sides with nowhere to go. Other structural hardships, again, there's no backyard. If you can, if you see the plot plan there, the contour lines are pretty steep. There's, I believe, three flat surfaces on the whole place. One is where the house is. One is right beside the house, and the other is down where the shed is. So, it's a challenge. Again, there's no attic or garage. And the inside of the house is connected by a spiral staircase. Not that that matters in this case, but it's, my wife calls it the spiral staircase of deaths because we have to go outside and move things around the house, which we have no story here. What, question number two, what is a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, which would result from literal enforcement with the provisions of the bylaw? Well, nowhere is less than 50 feet on that property. Not at all. There's no place to put anything on that property. It would be significantly expensive to do anything with the shed other than hopefully allow it to stay with mitigation and, you know, a mea culpa from us. And then, the third thing, how do we believe that the variance may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating the intent or purpose of the bylaw? We've got nothing but compliments from the neighbors. We believe it blends with the culture of the neighborhood, with the aesthetic, blends with the environment. We didn't disturb any trees. And we believe it actually enhances the neighborhood as our neighbors were going to speak on, but unfortunately, can't be here to do that. So, hopefully, you have a chance to walk the property. If not, hopefully, these photos lend an idea of what the property looks like. And that concludes our opening remarks. Thank you for letting me speak, and it's back to you.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Thank you.
Want to start off?
Sure. I... You're asking for a variance. I mean, I've been here, again, as I said earlier tonight, for years and never given one. And it would be more for a house, for a hardship. I mean, what you're asking for here is, to be honest with you, something that we can't give. I mean, this is scarcer than Hen's teeth, and Hen would have to have lips too. I'm sorry, but we can't give this. I certainly can't. I feel bad for you, but that's 1.7 feet is... We just can't do it. I can't do it anyway. Sorry.
I think we can do it. I visited the property. I concur with the representations of the applicant that the topography out there is very, very unusual. There's probably very little, very little flat space to put it. Now, even though this property, this shed, which is, by the way, a very unusual shed having stained glass windows. I never saw that before, but anyways, I'm glad he said it's a utility shed. Even though it's 1.7 feet from the street line, as he said earlier, it's 18 feet from the traveled way, which is considerably more. And I don't think the street is ever going to be moved to the edge of the right-of-way, which is 40 feet, because of the slope of that land. That traveled way is going to remain where it is. And it's quite a bit higher, actually, than the shed, which is quite a bit lower than the traveled way. So, we have a situation here where, one, he needs a special permit for an accessory structure in the front yard, but it can't be less than 50 feet. And then, he needs a variance to be less than 50 feet. I think he meets the criteria for a variance because the soil conditions are unique. Well, I don't know what the soil conditions are, but the shape and topography of the land is crazy. And there's no other place to put this, so this is the only, it makes sense to put it where it is. And I do believe that there would be a substantial hardship to the owner to deny the variance. And as far as there being a substantial derogation from the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaw, I don't see where it would bother anybody. There's no neighbors out there to speak of. Hardly anybody's going to see it, and the people who are going to see it are going to see it. It's just the same people living on the street. So, if this were on a main street in town, I would feel differently. But this is out in the woods where nobody's going to see it, so I don't care.
Okay, I do drive it. It is really slopy. I do think you can move it, though. Even when you're in your own picture, there's flatlands that would bring you away from the street. Not much of a flatland, but a little bit. I don't think you could trail or anything into it or anything, but it can be moved, I feel. That's all I have. Jim?
I agree with Mr. Duffy, having gone out. I think the topography is, the lot shape and size is very unique. A variance is extraordinary relief, though. The concern I always have with these situations is that, as they say, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than get permission. Were you unaware that you were in wetlands and you had these setback requirements?
I can't speak for my stupidity on this, except for no. I mean, where I grew up, in the mountains in New Hampshire, if you kind of do what you think you like to do for your property or on your property, but...
What part of New Hampshire?
Lakes Region, Danbury.
Sure. I used to live in Tilton.
Okay, yeah. You basically build what you want up there.
Got it, come on. Yes, please. Thank you.
This was also during the time of lockdown. And had we, I think, thought to ask, people weren't really working at that time?
It's all online.
It is.
I would agree with the analysis of Mr. Duffy, though, that although it's 1.7 from the delineation of the edge of the private road, the road actually, though, it's closer to 20 feet. The topography is very unusual, so I think that a variance can be granted. The reason I would be inclined to do it too is CONCOM is requiring significant mitigation about the coastal issues as well as, basically, because of the conservation violations. So, that was my primary concern about location. And that given the weather conditions and such, I... I would be a shaver.
The shed triggered those violations?
It did, yes.
Amongst others.
Could I also point out that my entire house, our entire house, is 17.9 feet from the property line, which is less than where the shed is to the actual usable road. Just throwing that out there for more ammunition.
What's referred to as pre-existing nonconforming.
Okay.
Do you have children?
We do, which is, yeah, we have a teenager and my daughter's toy. That was part of the reason for needing storage for toys and...
They're good at hills.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Tony.
When you built this prior to February 24, you did it without a building permit. And I just heard why maybe you didn't, but that doesn't preclude that it requires a building permit. Had you applied for a building permit, you would not have created a self-imposed hardship. You would have been told, no, don't do that without getting a variance. You would have known that you had to go to conservation because you're working on a buffer. So, right now, the way I see it is that you created this hardship, not because the land or the topography is the hardship, which it would be. It's definitely a hardship. I did go out to the property. But in my view, I'm not an engineer. In my view, this shed could be on the right side of the house. You have an option. It may not be the one you want, but it couldn't go on the other side of the house. It's a very, very difficult piece of land. We have a lot of that down here. But you created this hardship because you went around the building permit requirements where you would have found out at that point in time that you got a problem. So, I don't see how this board can give you a variance because you created the hardship. It's not the land. You would never have done this because you would have been told there's an issue. So, this is a self-imposed hardship, as far as I can see, versus a topography hardship, although that exists. But you created this. That's my issue with this.
I understand that issue. I'm a reasonable person. That being, there's nowhere on this property that's within, that's flat enough to do this, within 50 feet or outside of 50 feet.
But you would not have, if you filed for a permit,
Right.
you would have been told, and you would never have done this. You would have been told, you got a problem. You can't do this. And therefore, because you didn't file for that permit, you now have created a hardship for yourself, which you're now asking this board for relief on. And I don't know, just because the topography is difficult in this case, I don't know why we would do that. I just don't understand why we would do that.
I have a question following up on something you've raised through you to the administrator. I mean, what is the maximum by right, or what triggers the need to get a building permit? Is it over 200 square feet or 400 square feet?
100.
200.
Yeah, this is...
It still has to meet everything else.
Oh, no, no, absolutely. I'm just, as to the building permit issue, I'm just, and it's over 200, so it would have been...
And I do agree with Mr. Duffy, Mr. Morse, this is way out there, so to speak. No one really can see it. Whether or not this road will be paved at some point in time, I have no idea. I don't even know if it's a private way or a public way. If the town controls it or UFOs controls it or HRA. So, I have no idea whether this road will be...
It's a private, right?
Yeah.
And I would say we acknowledge we did the wrong thing. I would say we acknowledge we've done the wrong thing. But we have been here repeatedly, working with Mr. Street and Conservation to try to make it right. So, I guess that's why we're here, you know, appealing to you for relief from, yes, the self-imposed hardship that we may want to put upon us. I guess that's the crux of it. We're asking for relief.
Thank you.
Yep. Nick, do you have anything?
I think it's a tough situation considering that we've treated other variance applicants. I mean, we have, you have to meet all three of the requirements.
Variance.
Huh?
Variance.
Yeah. What I'm saying is, I think you have to stay consistent on this. You have to meet all three. The hardship is not, was imposed by them. So, again, to stay consistent, I feel for the applicant, but it opens a can of worms, I think, and sets a precedence on other decisions that may come about in the future on variances, especially one that may.
I was able to find a few other cases where you have voted in favor of the applicant. Case 052-24 was a garage with a habitable space and pool in the front yard, a garage and a pool, and...
That was 50 feet, though.
02, sure, but okay. It's still a variance. I would argue, right? 02725 was the cabana, pool, and a sports cart court in the front yard. I don't know how this happened, but it was a guy on Deer Pond Road with a house, a lighthouse, a school, a workshop, and a garage on a tiny property. So, I know there has been precedent in the past. I'm not a lawyer, and I can't argue to those cases, but I think it's well within your rights to see this case and how it relates to the other cases that have come before for a variance for something in the front yard like this.
When I, yeah, when I say what I say, it's because variances are very rarely given out. And when they're creative, self-imposed, in this case, the way you did, makes it even more difficult. Do I believe you could, at expense, pick this building up and move it to the other side of the house? Probably. What's it going to cost to do that? A very difficult lot. And I feel terrible about saying what I've just said, but it's, what I've said is accurate. I do. I feel terrible about this. I wish, I wish I, we're not sitting here right now talking about this. I think you created your situation.
Anybody have any further questions up here for the public? Anybody from the public want to speak on this? Noelwell? Any comments on the variance?
The house is pre-existing, yes, to the front setback?
Yes.
Yes. So, can you do this by special permit rather than variance?
No.
50 feet.
It's front yard too.
Do you want to approach in the front yard with the construction? So, that's an extension of a nonconformity?
No, it's a variance here.
Variance.
No local bylaw?
We have done some when they have a lot of, you know...
Nothing at 1.7 feet, ever, that I'm aware of.
Okay, so we're all set. Do you have anything further?
At this point?
Anything further?
Does he want to consider withdrawing to consult an attorney?
That's an option, I suppose.
He needs to consult with an excavator.
Well, I agree with you, but I'm just trying to make, I'm trying to make something work here, and I don't know how to make this work.
He is, he is right, probably, though, to allow him the opportunity to withdraw. I mean...
No, I don't disagree.
No, I... If you withdraw, yeah, go ahead. You can...
I know there was a zoning enforcement, excuse me, a conservation enforcement. Have you received an enforcement letter from the building commissioner about the shed at this point?
Yes, that's how it got kicked off.
I didn't see that one in the file. I just saw the, I just saw the CONCOM, but all right.
But maybe if he withdraws, he can clean up the mess.
What did the enforcement order say? From the building commissioner, what did it say?
Well, I can tell you what I was told by Mr. Street when we had all our meetings, that he would grant the permit if I could get Conservation and zoning to agree with it. He's willing to issue me a permit after the fact.
That's a giant if.
If, sure. I think enough people that have driven by have seen that it is what it is. It's not a nuisance. It's not a hindrance of the neighborhood.
Have you considered moving it? Have you looked into what that would take?
The, yes, there are power lines immediately above the shed, which would, and all these, every single dot you see here is a tree. So, I'd have to, have to take down trees, get an enormous crane to come up and over the shed to lift it back up and over the wires, up the street, and up here. I mean, this is not flat.
Well, you could move it in pieces and eliminate the crane expense.
Okay, I mean, you could put it, I don't know.
But you still need to excavate a spot on the right-hand side of the house that would accept it. And I...
I appreciate you trying to give me options to move it. I just don't see how it's feasible to stay within, even the 50-foot buffer. I mean, this is 17 feet. Double that is 34 feet. And then, I'm on a property line. There's just no space for that.
Well, in all honesty, this isn't and shouldn't be an option. I'm sorry.
He's not looked into, well, he believes that it would be difficult to move it. I mean, I know you can move it. It's, it would be expensive, and you can do it a couple of different ways. It would be, it's a very difficult lot. But maybe he should have that option of maybe spending some time with the contractor to figure that out.
That's what I was just thinking. That's what I was just kind of saying, that if he withdrew, at least he could...
Well, I mean, if he's denied, he has no option but to do that.
Because he'd be told to tear it down.
Right.
Or move it.
Or move it.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's the same, same thing. I mean, I mean, we can't legally, we can't do this for him, unfortunately.
I think you can. I think you might not want to out of precedence. I think you can. I think you're a powerful board.
That's where the problem is. Then, everybody's going to want one. You're 1.7 feet when you need to be 50. I mean, it's just, it's too much of a reach. And we don't give these things out.
No.
So, I think we just vote...
A motion to close.
Are you all set? Okay.
What is he doing?
I don't think it's going to make a difference. That's what I was just discussing with him, that even if you withdraw, you're going to end up moving it.
You're going to, what are you going to do? Come back and ask us to have the shed the same spot? I mean, it's not going to, withdrawing isn't going to do you any good.
I don't think it's going to make any difference.
Well, the withdrawing part gives them an opportunity to explore options. Well, the withdrawing part gives them an opportunity to explore options. Am I wrong?
But this isn't, and what they have isn't an option.
If, if this board denies, and it sounds like that's where we're headed, denies it, that's it. It's done.
He's got six months, I think, doesn't he?
Does he?
No.
There's no timeframe.
So then that's it.
He would still move it rather than tear it down because he, he'll be-
And that enforcement mechanism, and that enforcement mechanism is still in progress right now. I mean, as much as we'd like to, we can't do anything for him.
And he will save money on the mitigation if he goes on the other side. See, that picture right there looks like he can move it down.
Well, he's going to still be, he's, he'd still be at the 100-foot buffer, which means now he's got to file again with Concom. It's a completely different situation. He's got a, he's got a, um, he's got to replace some plantings and things of that nature. He's got a very difficult situation here. And he's going to have to file again. I, I suspect he'll have to file again with Concom because he's in the 100-foot buffer.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I don't know that-
I don't think the, the withdrawal wouldn't really make a difference.
No, it wouldn't.
Am I right?
No, it would trigger, the enforcement action is still, it would trigger, either way, it's triggering the enforcement action. If it's a denial or a withdrawal.
All right, I'm ready to just vote then. You guys all set? Do we have a motion yet?
Yeah, a motion to close.
A motion to close we have?
I'll second.
We're closing? Everybody's okay with closing? Motion to close, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? You're running this one, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so in terms of finding, we have to make findings of fact, the property's in AGA District. The shed is 212 square feet, uh, so it did require a building permit because the limit for a shed without a building permit is 200 square feet. Um, the, uh, shed was built in the year 2021 by the owner without a building permit. The shed is located 100, excuse me, 1.7 feet from the property line at Deer Pond Road, but it is 18 feet by testimony of the applicant from the traveled way of Deer Pond Road. There's no issue, Deer Pond Road, by the way, is a private right of way at this location. There's no issue with lot coverage by structure or lot coverage by structure parking and paving. They're both within limits. I did mention the referrals from the various departments, but I note again that there is an enforcement order outstanding from the Conservation Commission dated February 15, 2022. Now, under section, um, he needs two forms of relief. The first is a special permit under section 11.4A1. The ZBA may issue a special permit for an accessory structure in the front yard, but not less than 50 feet from the street. So we're voting no and denying the special permit. And because we've denied it, we don't really have to get to the issue of, of variances. So, um, and we find that the site is not adequate for the proposed use. It is not suitable for the proposed use. No issue with traffic. Uh, there's no issue with neighborhood visual characters, no issue with sewage or utilities or affordable housing, but it's a site, um, which although it is very unique, it's very unique topography, it is not adequate, um, to conform to zoning bylaw.
You should probably mention Gary's level of that too. Didn't you only say Concom?
Oh, Concom issued an enforcement order and the, the building commissioner issued a letter saying that he would issue the permit if he got a permit from this board, but he hasn't, so.
Is that all we need for this? Do we need other, do we need anything else for a denial?
Special permit, so that's the criteria. If we were addressing the, the variance, then yeah, we would be-
But you need the special permits to go-
No, no, that's what I'm saying. We don't need additional findings.
So I think we're all set. We're good? Ready to vote, everyone? All those for denying the, the, um, the motion?
Aye.
Denying?
Deny.
Aye.
Aye.
In favor?
I'm a no. I think we could have granted some.
And Frank, you're with Jim. Okay, 3-2.
So it's a 3-2 to deny?
Sorry. Thank you for your service though. I'm sorry about this. All right, moving on. Are we doing any minutes? Table nine minutes, full discussion. Board updates? I did want to remind everyone, we're going to shoot for Saturday in October at some point. Ash will probably give us an email, you know, at some point. Don't rush on that. Future agenda items. We're all set? Our next meeting is August 21st at 6:00 PM. Mark?
Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
All second. All those in favor?
Aye.